We're on. Mayor Kane is on his way down to Basalt Town Hall because it seems like there's a lot of[122.78][122.78]internet problems going on, so he asked us to kind of go ahead with our work sessions. We have two work sessions before six o'clock. The first one is with the Parks Open Space and Trails Committee, and then we're following that with a work session with the Basalt Public Arts Commission. So we'll start with Post, but let's go ahead and acknowledge who is on the line in terms of the town council. We have David Knight is on our Zoom call, Elise Huddle, Bill Infante are all on for the town council. I don't, I'm not missing anybody, right? From the town council?
Glenn Drummond.
Oh, and Glenn Drummond's on, sorry. Thank you, Glenn. And then from Parks Open Space and Trails, we have Cindy Bruce, who is our chair, Julie Kolar, who is our vice chair, Carol Hawke, Jason Groves, and they're all on the Zoom call. And we have Paul Hiltz is also on the committee, but he had another conflict tonight, so he wasn't able to join us. So this is an opportunity really for the town council to check in on the work that Post has been doing for 2020 and to talk also about the 2021 work program. So in our, in your packet materials, I kind of highlighted a few of the major projects that Post is working on, and I'm going to turn it over to Cindy Bruce to start the conversation. I also emailed to all the councilors the more detailed Post budget, so you can see that there's a lot of, a lot of projects that Post is working on, and if we want to kind of zero in on a few of those, we can. Basically, we have the money that Post uses is from the 1% sales tax, and it's generating about $2 million a year. We've been saving money primarily for the Basalt River Park improvements and also for the Albany Park improvements. So with that, I'll turn it over with, to Cindy.
Hi, everyone. Thank you. I'm Cindy Bruce. I was just going to say thanks for meeting with us, letting us meet to give you our update. A couple things first, I'd just like to recognize Brian Pisante for doing such a great job with the Basalt pool for this COVID summer that we've had. The pool opened on June 3rd and stayed open throughout Labor Day with no COVID issues, and we had just a great high-quality experience for lap swimmers, water aerobics, and the family swim time. So truly the multi-generation, generational crowd. Secondly, I'd like to thank Connect, the Connect One team, Giles and Elise, especially for their patience and their efforts as we moved through all the Albany Pool plans. So moving on to the specifics from the list that we had today, each of the Post members today here will speak to different aspects, and then maybe feel free to ask questions, maybe at the end, and we can circle around to different issues. So I'm first with the Albany Pool update, and we feel that a large part of the Post's task regarding the pool was to make some hard decisions about how to go forward with the pool design in a kind of a responsible yet creative way. So as a group, we felt that the main directives were to keep the project within our budget so as not to increase the usage fees hopefully in the future, and secondly, to get our carbon footprint to be as low or as green as possible with the Green Team's help. For example, Post did not recommend to include a hot tub element in the current design of the pool. After looking at the overall information and the cost numbers, we just had to decide it was not something we could include at this time, although the pool renovations do not foreclose the hot tub option in the future if the town's goals were to change. And then for the pool, we have completed the water line, and then earlier this summer, the ADA lift chair was installed for use in the past, this past summer. So then for the future, after our last very enthusiastic meeting with town council and hoping to speed up the improvement timeline, hopefully the bids will come back shortly, and we can begin with the locker room updates and still get that done in 2020. Keeping the pool open next summer is the goal, and then the other updates being done in the spring and the fall. So all that kind of will depend on the bids that come back in. We are yet waiting on that. So that was my update for the pool. And then as far as the Basalt River Park, we don't really have any updates yet, we're just waiting to own it. So, Susan kind of mentioned that. So then our, through on our list is actually the skate park improvements, and I will throw it over to Jason to give you the updates there. Thank you.
Hi, Jason, you're on mute.
So for Basalt Skate Park improvements, Brian will chime in and correct me if I misstate anything, but basically there's been some pretty extensive back and forth in surveying with park users and skateboarders in terms of sort of conditions that need addressing in terms of maintenance and decking and safety issues with, with current structures that are there that have, I believe have been addressed already, but also improving the features as well long-term, just to sort of help with long-term maintenance of this park and improvements and to just increase usability for what we have there. It's a great park, gets a lot of rave reviews from the people that use it, and it's important to put some attention to it. So the, Brian conducted a pretty thorough survey of some features that might be desired by the skateboard park users over there, and I believe we have some money allocated for construction in 2021. There's the possibility that we might have some sort of preliminary concrete work done this year, but that sort of depends on, on timing and, and other projects that are in the hopper as well. That's the update on the skate park.
All right, I think I'm next. I have a few topics to cover, and Julie, hi, everybody. Thanks for your time. So just a brief touch on signage and wayfinding. Basically, I think most councilors should remember, or they can refer to the Park Sign Plan that was adopted a couple of years ago, maybe even three, and we had some pretty extensive design, preliminary design works done, and as it turns out, a lot of the signs that were proposed in that are quite expensive to fabricate, install, et cetera. So the town is taking a sort of a simplified version so that we can get some key signage in certain parks, basically announcing entrances and exits, and really mostly rules, regulations, things that should be abided by. So the materiality and the, the general overall themes will still be incorporated, but on a simpler scale and a much more affordable one that can be implemented pretty quickly. Additional wayfinding, you know, we always have people saying, you know, we need signs here or there, and we try to address those as appropriately and timely as possible. There is, some of you know there was some recent work done on the Swinging Bridge Trail, and I think there's some additional wayfinding that would be helpful there. We've talked about primarily getting people from the parking lots over on the school side to downtown to be able to utilize that little corridor better, also along Ponderosa Trail, and I'll talk a little bit about that in a minute. I'm just going to jump to corridor plans, and this is a part of the regional planning effort that's been going on, and this is just to say that Post and the town of Basalt would have modest contributions towards some of these larger goals that have been identified in the regional plan. Most of these having to do with addressing heavy traffic, conflict with pedestrians, how to create safer passageways, better signage. This could include, for example, along Willet's Lane, some traffic, more, more traffic-oriented pedestrian safety measures, passable bike lanes, etc. Another example would be along the Frank Smith Road, and this is just a study widening the shoulders, having consistent shoulder width, and additional safety. There's a lot of potential conflicts, vehicles, cyclists, pedestrians. And then jumping to trails.
We're going to need audio.
There's going to be wayfinding.
Can we clean them real quick?
Our ROI, Roaring Fork Outdoor Volunteers, together with us and Dusel Challenge Act, are currently starting to talk about the park.
I'm here, right?
And what that means is that it's not just a facility for, say...
Julie, just one, one second. Let's just get maybe Bill situated here, and then just give us one sec.
Cut off. There you go. Let her rip.
Okay. Sorry, Julie. Yep.
Yeah, so Ways and Means Park, which has to do with identifying trail usage in park activities that are much more widely accessible for all ability levels. So rather than just focusing on the usual, maybe sight or hearing impaired, RFVO wants to expand their accessibility to people with, for example, autism, mobility challenges, and all kinds of things, so that the word accessibility becomes a much more broadly termed factor and usage within our trails and parks. So they're really spearheading that. And then finally, RFVO also plans to complete the Light Hill Trail improvement that we've talked about in 2021, and this includes rerouting the steeper uphill sections that are of dire need of help, accessing the, the top, the summit saddle that we do. And then also, part of that trail work involves connections to Basalt Vista, the way the trails, the way they also access, allocate the, the parking areas so that people can use them, and there won't be conflict between, say, school bus, high school parking, trail users, Basalt Vista neighbors. And then, of course, RFVO, they're, they're one of our greatest partners in terms of trails, they, they seem very committed to be continuing on their work and together with the town to, you know, work on future trails as needed. So we kind of keep an open dialogue with them. They in fact attend a lot of our meetings to give us updates and to, you know, collaborate when possible. And that's it for my list. Thank you.
Okay. Hi, everyone. Carol Hawke, thanks again for your time. I'm going to just give you a brief overview of what we've been working on in the Willet's, West Basalt Park and Trails area. The improvements are being proposed for the boat ramp areas off of Willet's Lane to respond to the heavy use, and move the rafters off of the Willet's Trail. We're looking at adding an area off the trail with either pavers or concrete to stage equipment and not block the Willet's Trail. We're replacing a picnic table, improving the pathways to the water and increasing signage, as Julie mentioned, and restriping the parking. Also, with so many citizens at home, we've heard from some to, that they're looking for more activities for teens, such as a multipurpose court, and we've added that to our 2021 work plan to see where best to locate one. We hope to make progress with sidewalk and trail connections between the neighborhoods and the bus stops near the Mid Valley Medical Center and Valley Pine. We're looking into the Robinson Ditch behind Valley Pine to possibly also provide a connection from Willet's Lane to Valley Pine and that bus stop. Modest improvements have been made and are underway at the River Parcel off Willet's Lane at Evans Court, referred to as Parcel 10. There's a path down to the river thanks to the Roaring Fork Outdoor Volunteers, and we provided a small bridge across the ditch and a nice bench down there by the river, working on making the crossing of Willet's Lane a little safer. The Reed Street Park between the new SkiCo building and Stedman is being developed in conjunction with construction on the Stedman Building, and is required to be completed before the issuance of their certificate of occupancy. It will include a lawn area and trees to provide some shade and various sitting areas for people to dwell. And then the recent addition of the off-leash dog areas has been working really well, and the new signage again will be very helpful. So I think that covers it.
So Bill, this, we just really ran through pretty much the summary of what was in the packet materials and highlighted different aspects of it. We also just invited the Roaring Fork Outdoor Volunteers. We have Ron Ration and Jacob Baker just kind of listening, and in case you guys have a question for them, because as kind of noted by our Post members, we've been working closely with that group. So really now is just an opportunity for the town council to ask Post questions or for more information or to make comments on projects that we have that are underway and are proposed for 2021.
Great. Thanks, Susan. Can you guys hear me okay?
Yep.
Oh, good. Okay. Having way major, serious computer problems here tonight. So thank you, guys. That's, Carol, it's a good summary, and we're really pleased, I think, all of us to see the progress on dealing with rafter impact on that little Durox Park section out there that's been, you know, bugging people for a long time. So that's real progress, I think. So this is wonderful stuff to hear. I am sorry I joined late. I don't know if we got an update from Ron about the Light Hill Trail kind of schedule and what that's all looking like in terms of, you know, kind of manpower and progress and what to look forward to there. Did we hear on that?
Yes, I think so. Ron, did you want to add anything?
The only thing that I would, would add to it, that the project has gone really well for this summer and into the, the fall now. We will not be complete on the project this fall. We'll be very close, we'll have a little bit of work left that we will continue into the spring of 2021, but it is an exciting trail reroute, and Jacob and myself, we've been talking about it, we would actually like to, if the weather holds, that in October, do another tour of the trails, go out with a, a number of the council members and the other individuals that want to see the trail reroute to build not only enthusiasm for the trail, but also to take a little bit of pressure off of the Albany Kittle Trail.
Yeah.
And that's about the only update I have. Jacob, I don't know if you have any other thoughts.
No, we're, we're just moving full steam ahead, and we've had participation from youth groups, from civic groups, from individual families, and from group participants. Our public project for Light Hill is scheduled for October 3rd, and if you would like to come out, you don't have to swing a pickaxe. We accept all ages, abilities, and backgrounds, and we'd love to have you join us.
Excellent. Well, thank you, guys. This is quite a comprehensive list. I think maybe if no one's mentioned anything, we should just as a footnote, make sure you know that we are in frequent contact with CPW regarding fixing the retaining wall slash, you know, dam structure at Lake Christine that's got the damage, blockwork that's visible from Two Rivers Road, and we're making slow progress that has to be evaluated by the state engineer, the dam engineer, to provide specification for its repair, to make sure that it's structurally sound. So that's going on. Julie and I met some years ago to talk about resurrecting trail access to Basalt Mountain and the, the hot topic of possibly even resurrecting pedestrian and not bike access of the Salt Mountain. And that's on an agenda for conversation with them, so we may be circling back and recruiting you for help on that one. So that's a, that's a great topic. But congratulations on all this. The pool work looks like it's going to be fantastic, and we're making great progress there, and to see if our councilors have any questions, comments to our Post Committee folks.
Hey, Bill, I got one.
Yeah.
Sorry, I can't, I got here late, but first of all, I wanted to, I really do appreciate what Post has been able to do. I'm really impressed with the Albany Pool improvements and that whole process that went along with it, so kudos to all you guys for that. One question I do have is, you know, are overall, you know, kind of Trails and Parks Master Plan is getting a little long in the tooth, and I was just wondering, not advocating for it right now, I was just wondering if you guys any, had any conversations about updating that anytime in the near future or not?
Gary, maybe I'll just jump in. We did put that on our 2022 work program for the, for the update. Really, we, it's recognized in our overall Basalt Master Plan as a need, and it was simply that we thought we had a lot of projects for 2021 to implement, and we didn't, we didn't put it on, staff didn't put it on honestly, because we thought that it was a tough, a tough thing to take on next year with everything else that's going on.
No, I, I'm just happy that it's on a work plan, but you know, one of the things, you know, my alternative motive for that is to really, you know, see the public need and what the public wants for, you know, access to, to Lake Christine and stuff, because I think, I think what I've heard is there's a lot of people that would love to, you know, have some type of access up there, especially I think COVID kind of, you know, reignited some people's passion or some people's ability to get up there, and I think people have relearned about how cool it could be up there, and trying to work with CPW on access would be really critical for Basalt. But sometimes I want to see what the real need is from the public before, you know, launching into something with CPW, but I'm, I'm happy it's on the work plan, so thank you.
Any additional questions for Post guys? Glenn?
I wouldn't say it's really a question, but more of a comment. Emphasizing how much green improvements we've made at Albany Park would be a very good, good call, because how much did we reduce greenhouse gases just on the remodel of the pumps and everything there? Anybody have that stat?
I don't have it up.
I know, as we have, yeah.
Don't have it up. My finger ticked. Sorry, Glenn.
It's all right.
We'll try and find it.
You guys did a good job. Like the direction, awesome.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
Thank you for the work you're doing.
A good update. Thank you very much.
Thanks, guys.
Okay, you're welcome.
So we will move on to our next work session B and talk to BPAC Committee, if those folks are available and up and ready to go.
Thanks, folks.
All right, yeah, I'll start us out for BPAC. I'm Watkins, I work in the Department. We do have some BPAC members with us. I'm just going to give a brief introduction for anyone who's new on the council or just needs a refresher. BPAC stands for the Basalt Public Arts Commission, and it beats once a month, first Thursday of the month. We currently have six members, who are Chair Jeff Orsillak, Kieran Andrade, who is our vice chair, and Liz Bell, Summers Moore, Jeanette Bullock, and Abby Gerke. Some of those members were able to be with us tonight. So BPAC this year has had to pivot from the project that we thought we would be working on. I'm sure that'll be a surprise to no one. And we've accomplished one round of grant funding within the grant program that's been established in previous years before COVID struck us, and so Jeff and some of the other members will talk more about that. I'm actually going to turn it over now to Jeff Orsillak, who's going to talk about this year and especially about next year.
Watkins, thank you. And...
Thanks, Bill. Guys, thanks so much for your time. We appreciate it, and more importantly, thank you for helping us through this year. I think we pivoted pretty fantastically and had some, had some pretty interesting things that kind of came out of it, not just, not just us pivoting, but our, our grantees we granted to also have pivoted their, their programs to, to work a little bit better in the time of COVID, and I think we've seen that, you know, from the, from the granting program to the relief program to the, the barrier program, all have been well received by the community. So as we look forward to next year and kind of what we, we'd like to start to accomplish, the, we've got some, a lot of new energy on the EPAC group, with the EPAC group, which is fantastic, and so what we're trying to do is take that energy and focus it into kind of four main categories. I'm going to talk about the first two, and then a couple of the other members are going to take you through the other items. But, but the first thing we want to do is kind of work to enhance the arts economy infrastructure, and what I mean by that is we want to plan to plan, so, so the big focus there is that kind of, we've been talking about this arts master plan, we really want to get this off the ground and going, and we want to kind of set aside some money to make that happen, as well as we want to be able to establish some relationships with organizations up and down the valley, so it's, you know, we're not just doing this on an island, but we're, we're, we're working in, you know, along with, you know, Aspen, Carbondale, and those other communities. And then, and then finally, we want to start working towards the Colorado Creative District, so there's a lot of steps to do that, but we'd like to get those steps started, because we think that's, would be very positive for the community. So that's the first start, first part. The second thing we like to do is support arts events and performances, and we're kind of looking at a couple of projects here. We'd like to, you know, we're thinking about not just physical art, but, but events and activities, so we're kind of focusing on maybe something that changes the seasons, and then also looking into something in the winter, which we haven't done before as a community, so we're kind of looking at maybe, you know, an ice or snow sculpture type project there. We're kind of, you know, we're just exploring these things now, and we'd like to set aside, you know, the funds to kind of get that to happen if we can. And then from here, I'm going to pass it on over to Karen, and she's going to talk a little bit about item three on our categories. So Karen, go for it. Did we lose Karen?
Karen, you're on mute. You have to turn your mute off.
We're kind of, you know, we're just exploring these things now, uh, and we'd like to set aside, you know, the, the funds to kind of get that to happen if we can. Uh, and then from here, I'm going to pass it on over to Karen, and she's going to talk a little bit about, um, item three on our categories. So Karen, go for it. Did we lose Karen?
Karen, you're on mute. Um, you have to turn your mute off. So, take your cursor to the bottom. Yeah, you're off now.
Oh, sorry. This is a family emergency. We'll be back in like a few minutes.
Okay, no problem.
Okay. Thank you. So, I can fill it.
Consistent with the theme tonight.
Watkins, I'll, I'll fill in there. Um, so, so the other thing we're, we're talking about is, uh, we, we talked about support art, support our events. We'd also like to support artists and arts organizations. Uh, you know, we've got this COVID relief fund that's been very successful, and we're also looking to, um, um, start to kind of engage, uh, artist studios a- as well as galleries, um, uh, through some virtual tours and those kind of things. So we're, we're, we're kind of shaping what those programs might be a little bit, but that, that would be the third category. And then Summers, can you take us home with, uh, our fourth, uh, kind of zone we're talking about?
You home. Who wants to go there? Anyway, thank you, thank you so much. Um, I was tasked with, um, talking to you guys about enhancing the physical art inventory in Basalt. And there's three kind of main categories within that. Um, the main one being a, a grant program, which will hopefully focus on murals this year. We're heavy into them. We believe in them. We don't have enough of them. We'd like to bring that to Basalt. Um, and so that would be kind of our main grant program task, uh, for next year, uh, which is kind of exciting. Um, so we look forward to doing that. Uh, also, we'd like to bring about, uh, again, next year, the barrier project, which you've hopefully seen at the restaurants this year. We had some, uh, great applications and local artists painted the barriers that surround and protect the eaters. So we would like to continue with that. Um, and also the last one, uh, on my list, I'm sure there's more things, but, uh, speaking to you today, talking about, uh, getting, um, connection with the artway through the bike path, through the town of Basalt, connecting, once again, it's the same thread, connecting with the other towns in this valley and really having a cohesive art, you know, uh, art pattern with, within all of us. So somehow working through the artway, the bike path, um, but just to connect, uh, not being such an island that we are right now, and, uh, trying to engage other, other arts, um, entities. So, uh, I hope that helps, and, um, that's what I got.
Well, it helps a lot. I think we're all pretty excited about the mural program. Uh, you know, we have a nice big retaining wall behind our Thai restaurant there. Is that one of the sites that you guys are studying? Where, where are you thinking?
We're looking at a lot of different sites. Um, and nothing is set, obviously set in stone, the irony. But, uh, you know, I mean, we're really excited about looking, uh, at different venues and seeing how we can be creative with it and making it really a fun pool project.
Right. Great. Maybe the next Diego Rivera.
Yeah.
Uh, so Jeff, we, we, we were, uh, yeah, we were going to, Karen's, I think, is, it sounds like she got.
Yeah. Uh, we're late. And Liz is down, Liz was able to make it as well down there, so I wanted to recognize Liz. But, uh, we didn't know if we could get everybody there, but Liz is here as well. And like I said, we've got, uh, some great new energy, which is great. Uh, um, I'm excited to have, have, have a lot of folks on the board, which is, which is fantastic. Uh, and so we're really excited about all these, these items, guys. And, uh, we, uh, we're, we're happy to answer any questions. Uh, you know, we're going to develop these over the year if, if we can go forward with these i- things, and, uh, hopefully we'll, we'll make them all happen.
Are you guys in pretty close, uh, communication with the art base? And, uh, you know, Summers and I, uh, share that, uh, background, so I sort of done the board there. Here's, I'm just kind of curious.
Yeah, Abby Gerke is also, uh, she is, you know, she works at the art base, and she's also a member of EPAC. So we do have a nice inside track. I'm on the board there, obviously, so.
Yeah.
It would be, you know, it's important for us to try and reach out and get to CAU, get the art base, get the Basalt entities that are, you know, the larger entities together on the same page and everyone on the same vision to get some, you know, super cool art and get the public involved. Um, would be great.
Yes, the art base was actually an applicant last year, was it? For this, for this year? So for, for a grant?
That's right.
They're doing art in the park this summer.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, they always apply for great things and, yeah.
So. So what's your grant cycle? Are they going to apply again for this next year for 2021? Or what's, what's?
Maybe.
Yeah?
Yeah, you hope.
Yeah, so we set aside money for the granting program, and, and then I think what we're going to choose is try to focus this granting program a little bit on, like, like we said, a little bit more on murals this time and kind of getting, you know, we, the idea is to think about what the theme will be, which each time we give these grants, so that we can get the things the community needs and to support the community needs. And so, so we're hoping to kind of dial it in as a, as a more focused grant this time.
Okay. Glenn, you got a question, it looks like?
Um, mostly, the one thing I, you know, I'm impressed with everything you guys are doing. Uh, it's great to see the murals around towns. The biggest thing that I saw that stuck out to me that, like, I think is probably just me, I'm only one, uh, probably should be the greatest focus, would be the arts master plan. I know this was in the works about a year and a half ago when we met with you, Jeff, on the Post Committee. And, uh, to get that on paper and show the community what truly you guys want to accomplish, I think it's only going to be more powerful going forward, and it's only going to get more community engagement. And that's just me, I'm only one, but I think you guys could get that, that would be.
We agree, we, we agree, Glenn, and that's why it was item one on our list. So, uh, um, and, and we're, you know, one of our biggest tough, toughest things we realized, we needed outside help for that, so that's why we've been able to kind of actually partition some money this time to do it and do it right. That's the goal.
So the ice and snow sculptures, that's a, that's a wonderful aspiration. Um, do, can we make it in Basalt with, uh, climate change?
After the whole winter.
I would say hope springs eternal, but I think springs is the wrong word there, Bill.
Yeah, right. Yeah.
So, uh, yeah, you know, it's, we, yeah, it's, it's something we kind of kicked around and we, you know, it's, it, with you guys' support, we'll, we'll, we'll go full, full head and steam into it and see if we, we can find a way to make it work and find that two weeks of cold that we have.
Yeah. You know, Aspen's been pretty successful in engaging the design firms to come up with ideas and designs. And, you know, so I know Harry Teague's office and Design Workshop and CCY, everybody's kind of done their own entries. It's, uh, really helped energize that effort, so.
And we feel like all those folks that were up there are now, all those folks that were up there are now down here now, Bill. So we think it's a
Yeah.
great opportunity because they know they're losing a little bit of steam on that up there, and we, we can find a way to bring that energy down here, um, and liven the place up. But this, it was, you know, the energy in town was fantastic this summer, and we like to find a way to kind of carry some of that energy over to the winter.
Great. Uh, David. David Knight?
Hey, thanks for all the work. I, I have one question, uh, with the mural painting and all that. Is there any, uh, thoughts or appetite from, uh, business owners and, and the corresponding property owners to do mural painting on any private, uh, structures? I, I know there's, I've heard people say, oh, that would be cool. I don't know if they're working with you or not, just curious.
Um, not yet, simply because we haven't tightened it all the way down. But I don't know that we're not, you know, we're not opposed to much right now. So I think we need to do a little more research and the fine tuning of it all, uh, and then, you know, see where it goes from there.
And Counselor Knight, David, uh, feel free to pass on any, um, any interested business owners to us, and we'd be happy to, um, to talk to them.
Okay. So I got Elise and then Bill Infante.
Um, thank you for all the work that you do. I'm with Glenn. I'm really excited about the master plan. I think that'll be really useful. Uh, my question is, I'm curious to hear an update on the Modio sculpture, the five pieces. We've now had those for three years, on full disclosure. I'm ready for something new.
Jeff, do you want to take that?
Yeah, we're working with them now to, um, to move them along. So, um, eh, you know, we, we heard that they were kind of thinking about just taking them and, um, discarding of them, discarding them. So we're trying to fi- help them find another home for them. Uh, because, you know, it's still a little unfortunate to just take something and throw it in the trash. So, so, uh, if you, if you hear anything out there, um, uh, let us know. But, uh, we're, we're working with them now to kind of find a solution to, uh, where they will go, uh, away from here.
And to, and to add to that, um, they're, they're actually planned to, to be taken away this Friday. So we're working hard to find homes for, for some of them now that are, you know, not obviously displayed in Basalt, but somewhere else where they'd be at.
Moab, Utah might be a popular, uh, destination. You get my drift? Bill, Bill Infante?
I'm Cuba Kane. I am thrilled with Summers' proposal to connect the valley with Carbondale and the artway. I just think that is such a powerful tool for us to use to promote Basalt, but also to promote a valley-wide experience. And since we've got some great models around the state, looking at Salida and Buena Vista, Peonia and Hotchkiss, people I hope will talk about, the Roanoke Valley as a center for arts, and anything we can do to join the communities from Carbondale up to Snowmass. Snowmass also, by the way, has a great arts council that is talking about doing some integrative stuff with others in the valley. I met one of the women, I believe her name is Anne White, at one point. And, um, it seems like that would be also worth broaching how to take this connection even a little bit further. On, uh, the murals, great idea. And Bill Kane, um, the, the wall behind, uh, Mads is great. The, the space that comes to my mind that frankly is a little drab and dreary are all the underpasses that we have. If we could do some great colorful art down there, it would certainly brighten up the experience of, of traveling under 82, as the case is. But I, I guess the point I wanted to ask about, Jeff, you mentioned seeking designation as a Creative Arts District, which is a great initiative. Thanks to you and all of BPAC for broaching that. What, what do we need to do to help you? How do we, as council, as the town, get behind you and, you know, kind of support that effort?
Yeah, Liz has kind of been spearheading, uh, understanding this a little bit more. Um, Liz, can you weigh in a little bit? Yeah, if, if you can, I don't know.
Hi, um, so the challenge is, in order to become a Colorado Creative District, you have to be invited. And so one of the things, uh, that they're looking for is some sort of spearheading organization or collective. We, BPAC as a, an arm of the municipality would be the perfect site. Um, it looks like they have a two-year cycle and that we would have this coming year to do the exploration, lay some groundwork, and let them know we're interested. Uh, so it would not be a designation that could happen until 2022 anyway, with application happening in the fall. So we have time to figure that all out. And i- it looks like we already have, you know, some of the initial groundwork, but a lot of what needs to happen for the Creative District is also stuff that would be happening as part of the master plan evaluation and designation. It's inventories and getting people to sit in a room and vision and that kind of stuff. So a- as far as I know, nothing now from the town, except, you know, sort of permission and maybe some, you know, opportunity to spend a little money in the exploration of this.
Well, I would certainly give you all of my support, and I hope, Bill Kane. Um, does, is this something that needs more guidance? Or is this, is BPAC's recommendation sufficient for the town and staff to get on board and do what we can, which at this point doesn't sound significant, although I know it's a, a, a long and somewhat arduous process. But I think it's well worthwhile, given the amount of money that's generated by the arts, given that TACU will be, is up and out of the ground already. Um, we've got a real anchor to, to, to trumpet about our town, and whatever we can do, I would love to be able to support you.
Yeah. Well, our good comments, I mean, we've got TACU, as you said, TACU, then the Basalt Public Arts Council, Art Base. So we have, uh, a lot of, uh, energy here. And, you know, the, the, this organization can play a big role in bringing these entities together and making sure we're leveraging our dollars in the best way we can, and I think that's all happening. Uh, you know, it would be good to look at our budget, which is coming up, and, uh, focus on that a little bit more, just to make sure that these guys are getting what they need.
Can I add one more thing?
Yeah, Liz, I think, yeah, was up.
The, it appears to me, at least from looking at the website, that the vision behind the Creative District is using the arts to help generate economic prosperity and, um, you know, interest. And so one of the things that I'm not yet sure about is if we match, from a need standpoint, what their vision is. But if you get approved, there is $10,000 or so from them that comes with this designation in the first year. So they're, they're designating, giving you the signage, putting you on the map, but also giving a little seed money to help you move forward. So if they are interested in, in working with us and inviting us to apply, there may be some return on investment as well.
Good comment. Okay, any further discussion with our BPAC board? Uh, Summers, did you have your hand up? Okay. You just, you just bid on a new painting. Great. Uh, well, thank you, guys. This is all exciting stuff, and, uh, we really appreciate your efforts and all you do for the, uh, the town, and, uh, really looking forward to the murals. It could be, be great fun.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys. Thanks. We appreciate it.
Okay, with that, guys, we are at a quick council break. Uh, we are at 5:55. We're going to resume in a little over five minutes to call for our regular meeting. So, uh, you got six minutes, so you might want to use it to your best advantage. Thank you. Good evening and welcome to the regular couns- council meeting, Town of Basalt, for September 22nd, 2020. And, uh, we will begin our meeting with the roll call of the council. The Pam, please, call the roll.
Okay, sure. Thank you. Let's begin with.
Here.
Elise Hoddle?
Present.
Gary Tenenbaum?
Here.
Bill Infante?
Here.
Glenn Drummond?
Here.
Ryan Slack? Missing Ryan, and Bill Kane.
I'm here. Thank you.
We have six. Thank you.
All right, guys. Our first order of business is the consent agenda. Minutes, a resolution of number 36, Series of 2020, uh, have to do with our cafeteria insurance provider, and a special event activity permit to close, uh, town streets. Which is actually for Market Street out at Willett's for the ski swap. So there are the three consent agenda items, and, uh, I would entertain a motion to approve the.
Mayor, I move that the town council approve the consent agenda items as presented.
Okay.
Has anybody made a motion?
Elise did. I think you got cut off.
Yeah. Yeah, it just gave me a little message, said the, uh, internet connection is unstable. That's, uh, that's a nice, nice note.
That's an understatement.
It's not the only thing that's unstable these days. Uh, so was there a motion to approve consent?
Elise, do you want to read it?
Yes. Mayor, I move that the town council approve the consent agenda items as presented.
Second. Second, second, okay, Glenn, thank you. Moved and seconded, all those in favor, aye?
Pam, aye. So I can't just call the roll for that.
Oh, you have to call the roll, okay, go ahead, Pam.
You're muted, Pam.
I'm sorry, I guess I was confused. I don't realize that we had to do a roll call for the consent agenda. Okay, all right, uh, let's begin with Bill Infante.
Yes.
Thank you, Bill Kane.
Yes.
Thank you, Elise Hoddle.
Yes.
Thank you, Elise. Uh, Gary Tenenbaum.
Yes.
Thank you, Glenn Drummond.
Yes.
And David Knight.
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carried.
Seconded that motion. Knocking in.
All right, thank you. Next order of business is a call to the public, uh, to see if, uh, people would like to come and, uh, address the council with public comments. So, uh, for those viewing tonight, please, uh, limit your comments to three minutes and address your comments directly to the mayor. Identify yourself by name and address when making comments. Comments should be courteous, simple and constructive. Town council will make no decision, not take action, except to direct the town manager. So we will begin a little waiting period here to see if people would like to call in and, uh, address the council for, uh, any item.
And, and just to remo- Yeah, I've got the, the stop clock, uh, going. And just as a reminder, you can email planning@basalt.net or text nine seven oh nine eight seven seventy ten with your name and your phone number, and then we will call you. Uh, and I, I started the clock for a minute and a half when you were talking.
Great, so we will stand by here.
Glenn, I don't know what you said at the end of the, um, motion. We didn't hear you.
I was just trying to say that David Knight seconded that motion, just so it was clear in the minutes. He got to it before me. He should be recognized.
Elise, I think we prefer the, uh, I'm just one person, but we really like that backdrop of the, uh, West Maroon Pass going over to Crested Butte.
You don't like the sunflowers?
Sunflowers are good, no, I'm not saying anything, but, uh, dingo would blush at those. They're kind of pretty wild, so. They're good and everything.
So.
There you go.
Our, 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 our timer has stopped and I do not have any, uh, emails and we have no text messages. So I don't believe we have anybody that wants to speak during this time.
Okay, thank you. Then that concludes the, uh, public comment period. Our next order of business is comments from the mayor, council reports and comments. So floor is open for comments or reports from, uh, individual council members. Pam, you're muted, but.
Here, I'll go.
I'm good, I'm.
So this has just been notes from the, uh, Basalt Emergency Management Committee, meeting on nine ten twenty twenty. Some of these are a little outdated, I don't know, I won't go over those. But contact tracing app for Eagle County Risk Meter is, uh, pretty much been adopted by the state. Granted, they changed it a little bit, so there's, I think, a few different stages. And you're already seeing that in, like, in effect. Yeah, like, Christine Bernskar looking at, uh, reevaluating the status. They're also, um, looking at funding it, the rain gauges through twenty twenty-one, so that we can determine whether or not that's going to affect us in any not-good way. Um, positive news, we will be getting a new ladder, ladder truck delivered, hopefully by the end of the month for Basalt. Um, Mike Bosley is retiring from Eagle County Sheriff's Department as of October second. He is the undersheriff. Currently, I don't believe there has been another undersheriff appointed. Um, Grizzly Creek Fire, ninety-two percent contained. They changed over from type three to type one. The cost of that is hanging right about thirty-two million dollars. And, uh, as far as COVID news goes, public health order violations still are occurring, but most of the time, whenever not goes out and talks to them, everybody complies. And that's pretty much about it.
Great, thank you. Uh, anyone else on council, comments, reports? Uh, Elise.
Um, just one quick comment. We had a core board meeting last week and one of the things that Cora is looking into, in addition to energy efficiency, is, um, COVID, um, recirculation. I don't, I don't exactly know the technical terms, but basically, you know, products that will help, um, with indoor air that are also energy efficient. So, um, I'm excited for them to get into that because I think that's going to be really important this winter.
Great. Anyone else? David Knight.
Just wanted to thank Maureen Fitzpatrick for an awesome, uh, youth soccer and youth T-ball season. There, each one was, I think, a week or so. And, uh, yeah, and the parents even got to do a soccer scrimmage and play T-ball at the end. And it was, it was just a lot of fun and something really nice, uh, during these times. So thank you for that.
That's nice. Always embarrassing when the seven-year-olds show you up. That's not a good thing, David.
No.
I'm afraid it happens. Um, anyone else? I would be pleased to just make a few notes. Uh, Ryan and I had a really informative, uh, visit out to see the Takaw building, which is really remarkable to see how fast that building is coming together. Very impressive, it's ten thousand square feet, two hundred and forty-seat auditorium, kind of, I think you, most of us know the program, but, uh, it's coming together really rapidly. So we have a action item a little bit later on in the agenda tonight to, uh, deal with construction financing. Uh, but that was really worthwhile and, um, really encouraged council to go out. I know that, uh, Ryan Honey and Michael Lipkin would be happy to, uh, take you through a tour. If anybody would, you know, want to connect, maybe through Ryan Mahoney, we could, uh, set up additional site visits so you can go, uh, tour the building and see what's going on. It's really a, kind of a game changer, I think, for the Mid Valley for sure. So, um, you might put that on your calendar. Ryan, maybe you could just, uh, we could send a email around and get people to indicate when and if they want to go.
I'd be happy to.
Okay. Um, so just for the, uh, for the public, for those that are looking in, um, you know, as this is the age of Zoom and it seems, all seems very quiet. We did have a very, uh, productive face-to-face meeting with council last week and were able to work through a whole series of specific action items under our, uh, town strategic plan. Uh, and, uh, it was, I think, really satisfying for all of us. I think we plan on doing more of it. And, uh, when we get this worked up, we will get some public, uh, reporting, uh, on the strategic plan. And hopefully we'll get some newspaper coverage and we can kind of explain, uh, our work program initiatives. So with that, uh, if there are no further comments or questions, I'd, uh, be pleased to turn to the manager's report.
I think Glenn had his hand up there.
Did you, Glenn, go ahead.
I just have one more thing. I think in this time and age, it's, it's so important for us as council members to encourage the public and show the public what positive things the Town of Basalt is doing. Whether it be from climate change to COVID, to trying to work through the process of getting tents for the restaurants in winter, to show a positive attitude towards that direction. Everybody needs, everything is negative at this point, positive stuff. And I think that definitely falls on our shoulders. And every one of us has that responsibility to show what good things we are doing.
Yeah, well said. It's a hangdog world out there, for sure. Um, Elise, did you get to do your, um, Today Show morning, uh, sort of presentation yet?
I did, we filmed it this morning, so I think that's going to be available tomorrow.
Oh, outstanding, very good. Have you been contacted by NBC yet to see if you, so your agent?
Uh, no, but I was contacted by Entertainment Tonight.
Oh. Excellent. Sounds great. Okay, uh, Ryan Mahoney, I think you're up, town manager.
Okay, so really, uh, Bill, I think you've covered a couple of, of the things. I will follow up on that Takaw visit. I know, uh, Ryan and Michael Lipkin were certainly excited to have us out there and anxious to get more eyes on it and build that, um, sort of community pride and just, you know, a lot of excitement around the new building. Uh, we, uh, came up with a, um, a ca- a notice for a meeting next Tuesday, which will be the first, uh, coffee with council. Uh, that's going to be from eight to nine in the morning at Cici's Cafe. Uh, so for those in the public that have an interest in, uh, saying hi to the council members, um, they, uh, are all invited to join, which is why we're hosting it. And, uh, so we'll start those, um, usually it'll be the first and third, um, uh, Tuesdays of the month. So the off-council days. Um, and, uh, I was going to mention about Elise's recording. And then the, the last thing, just, uh, so people are aware, um, the Sheriff's Office, uh, both in Pittkin and in Eagle, did take the fire restrictions from a stage two to a stage one. Um, they did that last Friday. Um, and just an important note that I received today is to ensure, um, that everybody understands what that means, that, you know, with regard to dispersed camping, you cannot have a fire in a fire ring that you make. Um, you can basically have those established campgrounds and established fire rings. Um, and that propane fires are, uh, permitted. Um, but we just want to make sure that everybody stays safe and aware, um, because, uh, things are still pretty dry out there, even though we got a little rain this afternoon. So, uh, that's all I have for you tonight, Mayor.
Great. Thank you, manager. Uh, so, uh, we will then move to our presentations portion of our agenda. And, uh, our first order of business is to discuss with BAC the, uh, rental assistance framework. You know, I think, as you recall, last, in our work session with BAC, um, there was, uh, our, our decision by council to advance fifteen thousand dollars to help diff- uh, assist people that are struggling with, uh, meeting rent in the town-supported, uh, affordable housing programs. And, uh, we were, they were going to go away and work on thinking about the methodology and priorities and how to structure, uh, the grant program. So James and Sarah are back to talk to us about that. Um, is that about it? James, do you want to?
Yeah, thanks, thanks, Mayor. Um, this item is a check-in from BAC on the short-term emergency rental assistance, uh, framework that BAC has come up with. Uh, as the mayor indicated, the background is that, uh, council meeting before last, BAC suggested the emergency rental assistance idea, uh, to council for Basalt Affordable Housing tenants. And the council at that meeting seemed to be interested in allowing for the fifteen thousand for twenty twenty CARES Act funds to be used, uh, for this purpose. And so, uh, council wanted to see a framework for the disbursement. And BAC has met a couple times since that council meeting and come up with a draft. Uh, I've got the draft on the screen and, uh, it was also emailed to council, uh, by Pam. Um, the BAC's, uh, program goal was essentially for twenty twenty, uh, was to provide emergency assistance funding to get individuals and families of Basalt Affordable Housing, uh, through the year twenty twenty without them being behind in rent payments so that they could avoid getting evicted when eviction, uh, moratorium is lifted at the end of the year, potentially. Um, and so they've come up with some criteria. Uh, I'll go through those criteria, they're one through nine. Uh, the first is that the applicant would have to live in deed-restricted affordable housing in Basalt. Uh, the second is that the applicant, uh, would have to have contacted other funding sources, uh, first and, and provide, uh, uh, proof that they had done that. Uh, those other funding sources could, could be the Mountain Voices Project or, uh, Catholic Charities. Uh, staff has reached out to those entities and, uh, you know, they have potential funding available. Uh, number three is that the applicant would have to have available resources in their household of less than three months' worth of shelter expenses. Uh, you know, this is kind of an item to show that, um, you know, they, they are struggling to have the resources to pay their rent. Um, number four is that an applicant for assistance would be willing to undergo free financial counseling, uh, if that's available, uh, to, to try to get them back on track. Uh, item number five, or criteria number five, is that the applicant must not, uh, have more than two months of past due rent. Uh, and then number six, uh, payment of the short-term rental assistance would be directly to the landlord and, and not go, uh, through the actual applicant. Uh, and then number seven that we have on there, individuals and families are eligible for one-time assistance. Uh, but the BAC, uh, could, uh, evaluate those on a case-by-case basis to allow for a second, uh, disbursement per household. Uh, number eight that we have there is households would be eligible for up to eighty percent of, uh, two months' back rent, uh, as recommended by BAC. And then we've added a number nine since the council received their, uh, draft here. Uh, number nine basically indicates that an applicant for assistance would have to have been negatively impacted financially by COVID. And this is in order to draw the link between the funds and the CARES Act, uh, funding. Um, so we felt that that was needed. Um, we have a few BAC members on the call this evening. Uh, let me stop sharing my screen so they'll pop back up. We've got Kathy Click, the chair, as well as Doug McDonald. Uh, Doug was on here.
Yeah, he's there.
Ah, I see Doug. Um, so staff would suggest, uh, getting additional comments that, uh, BAC members have, uh, and then, uh, providing some council discussion and feedback on the framework. Kathy and Doug, do you have some comments?
Kathy, do you want to speak first?
Of cour- always. I think that, um, well, thank you for having us. And, uh, a special thanks to James and Sarah for really pulling all of our, um, conversations together to come up with these criteria. I think that we are very appreciative of the council taking this seriously and availing funds to families who are struggling and people who are struggling because of this pandemic. So, um, if you have any questions about how we came up with the criteria or why, we're, I think Doug and I would both be happy to discuss it. I, we feel that this is probably going to be something that continues on in the next, um, year. And so we're, are expecting and hoping that the council will consider additional funds for twenty twenty-one budget. But to be able to come up with this emergency fund for twenty twenty, I think, is, um, commendable and we're very appreciative.
Great, thanks, Kathy. There, uh, Doug, do you have comments before council?
Well, um, simply I have to reinforce what Kathy said about this is probably going to be an ongoing process. Um, we're looking at no more federal funds. We don't know whether the state has some left to contribute or not. Um, but, uh, we, we struggled with this in order to figure out how much, um, we could really distribute out of, out of the, the limited resources that we do have. Fortunately, we have a, a fairly limited. Fortunately, we have a, a fairly limited clientele at this point. Um, again, restricted to the people who are in affordable housing in Basalt. But, um, uh, when the end of the year comes and no more federal funding is going to appear, um, we'll definitely be back probably to, to keep these people in their homes. So, um, again, I think it's, it's going to be an ongoing fight. And, uh, we'll, we'll try and keep monitoring what the status of our, of our clients are and, uh, the people money.
Thank you. Um, questions of council to, to Doug or Kathy about the, uh, the criteria? I know I have a couple, but, uh, let's, let's hear from council first, see if they have questions. David?
Yeah, how is the COVID-19 impact substantiated there in item nine? Do you have any specifics you're going to be asking for?
Staff? Well, there are a couple of items on the list, uh, David, um, that are probably not going to have, uh, you know, hard credentials. Um, but we are having the applicant, um, submit a, an affidavit which they signed. And so they're going to be legally responsible for telling their, their tale.
Okay, so I'm part of the affidavit. I didn't, you said it was for the, for the CARES Act. Just want to make sure we got it. Is that traceability right? If, I don't know if there's an audit process for that or not, but just curious about that.
And, and we also have included, uh, kind of a narrative from the applicant, uh, describing, you know, how they believe that they've negatively been impacted financially by COVID.
And David, if, if I may, um, because they are federal funds, we are always, um, uh, in a position where the, um, there can be an audit. And so we always just, you know, want to make sure that we collect the information. Uh, you know, we don't really take it further than, than, you know, that affidavit that we'll get and, and the application. But, you know, I, I don't suspect that, um, if an audit came about, that they're going to reach out and try to really dig deep into, into all those, you know, different, those personal lives. So I, I think usually just kind of getting that paperwork, um, upfront, uh, to know that it does have a nexus with, with those funds is, um, is good.
Okay. Thanks, guys. Doug or Kathy, um, question, uh, from recalling the screen. Uh, I think it was item number two, uh, required a demonstration or showing that the applicant, uh, would have already talked to other funding sources. So I assume, and I just would like you to verify whether if something's correct, is, is the spirit of this to make sure that people have exhausted other, uh, remedies that, uh? So, yeah, James just put it back up. Applicant must, uh, have contacted other funding sources, uh, at least Mountain Voices Project, them Catholic Charities, et cetera. Um, is, is the spirit of that, that, that these guys should have exhausted all of their remedies before they come be- before you? Um, and I, I guess I would also want to make sure added in there would be the Aspen Community Foundation COVID-19 Relief Fund, which still has, just short, I, as I understand, it still has about three million dollars, uh, specifically focused on, uh, on, you know, basically, um, rent and subsistence, uh, funding. So, uh, any rate, could you elaborate on that, that guy, that number two criterion?
There are really a couple, couple of reasons for that. I mean, um, first of all, uh, since we have a, probably the smallest, um, budget of these other agencies, um, we may be a sort of a last ditch, um, uh, source of assistance. And if we can have other, um, you know, wealthier sources, uh, step in and help us, then we would like to, you know, give them a chance. Uh, now, one of the, one of the, uh, sources that we're, um, hoping to get in a year with a little bit later, um, is the Mountain Voices Project, who have a plan to do a one-third, one-third, one-third split among landlord, um, tenants and another funding source. That funding source could be, uh, they're talking about lining up lenders, but that funding source could be us. And so it's not like they exhaust everything before they get to us, but we want to know that they're trying. And if they are involved with these other people, we may be the last dollar into the pot.
Gotcha. That's helpful to understand. Thanks.
Hey Doug, Doug, this is David again. I see on James's on the screen here, there are six items, you know, on, on, uh, in the middle section. So that would have answered my question. Sorry for, yeah, not seeing that there. I didn't see that in the one that was mailed out.
Yeah, that wa- that was an addition today. Sorry, Bill.
Yeah. Could you go back to the gallery view so we can see people? Great, thank you. Um, well, you guys, this is quick work. I mean, you turned this around pretty fast. Uh, when do you think you're going to be open for business for, for this, uh, grant program? Or rental assistance program?
Well, we're, we would be making recommendations to the town council. We're not, um, empowered with making grants. So I think as soon as there is affirmation from the council that we can go ahead with these and you're satisfied with the criteria and the information requested, that we can publicize it and, and, and see what happens.
Yeah, okay. Um, so, um, Ryan, would you like some form? Or, or Jeff Concon, do you, do we want some form of formal, um, or informal support for the criteria and get these guys to, to, uh, start considering applications for, for rental assistance? Um, are there additional steps that we think are necessary? Or how, how do you want to go about this?
Mr. Mayor, I do think there needs to be some action to approve this framework. But Ryan, is this going to get wrapped up into our later agenda item on how the CARES Act funding would be spent?
Okay.
Yeah, so we brought back an item seven G, um, for action, uh, this time. So we introduced initially to council at the last meeting, the ideas for, uh, the CARES Act funding and then it's back for action this time. So, uh, the, you know, the criteria, uh, were not specifically outlined in that item. So I don't know if, if Jeff has a problem with, with that issue, but at least the dispersment of funds was contemplated. So what do you think, Jeff?
I, I think it'd be appropriate for council to just take action by motion to approve, uh, th- this framework subject to any final amendments in the, uh, town manager's discretion. And then we, we've properly addressed it here.
Right, thank you. Um, is there a motion from, uh, the council to, uh, approve the framework as presented by, by BAC? Kathy Click and, and Doug McDonald, uh, give them direction to move forward? And then we will, you know, take up the actual funding, uh, process a little later on as part of our CARES discussion. So that's the gist of it.
Mayor, I move that the town council approved the framework as presented this evening.
Second?
Second.
Second.
Okay, Glenn Beechuk. Elise, so it's been moved and seconded. Do you want to roll call on this, Jeff?
Just a voice vote is fine.
Okay. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any nays, uh, motion passes. Thank you very much. So, um, is there more discussion with our BAC team? Or, uh, is that pretty much the agenda for tonight on the BAC discussion?
That, that was pretty much the agenda for this evening. Thank you. Appreciate it.
All right. Thank you, guys. Uh, really appreciate the help with all this. These are tricky times and, uh, you know, it's, it's gonna, it's gonna go fine. You know, we're, as they say, we're sort of, uh, flying the airplane as we're pulling it here. So it's kind, it's kind of interesting. Okay, thanks, so.
Eric, I appreciate your support.
Yes, thanks.
Thanks Kathy. Um, so next item is, uh, a, I would have to say kind of cheerful in, in, uh, in our, where, where, world where it's kind of hard to find good news. I think we got some good news coming from our CFO. So Kristy, you're up, sales tax report.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm going to go ahead and share my screen. Um, then we'll, uh, talk a little bit. This, this actually, um, I wasn't planning to spend a lot of time on this, but, um, we're going to be talking a, a lot about budget in the ensuing weeks. Um, just stand by for, um, uh, some meetings that are coming up with, uh, Ryan and myself, um, over the next couple of weeks. Um, and also then, um, looking at October thirteenth being our first, uh, draft budget, which is going to be the kickoff of a, um, very robust budget season, I believe. So, um, so with no further ado, I'll give you the good news for today. Um, so as the sales tax report indicated, um, the month of August, we saw eleven point six percent increase, um, compared to 2019 in August. Um, that's a little less than we've been seeing trend throughout the rest of the year, but still extremely favorable. And most of that, again, is, um, is the online sales piece that we're, um, estimating is somewhere around fifteen percent of our, um, sales tax. So, um, so that's the majority, uh, overarching of the, the reason for the increase. Um, we still had our retail food up eight percent over the last year, um, as well. Um, and then retail sales up nineteen point six, um, sporting retail up twenty-seven, twenty-eight percent. So we have some of our local businesses doing, um, quite well as well. Um, it was interesting that restaurants without bars, um, was a, still a ten point three percent decline, which is fairly consistent with the rest of the year, year-to-date. And restaurants with bars, um, showed an increase of thirteen point six percent. Um, but we did have some changes and, um, increases in businesses, um, that were opening. So that did have an impact on those numbers. Um, so then looking at the revenue modeling, I didn't, um, incorporate it into the council pack at this time because we're talking more specifically around a projection that, um, Susan and myself and Ryan and all of your department has done a lot of work and research on. That's going to be a lot, um, more, um, accurate than just a, a model. But, um, we did increase the model, um, for the next, um, agenda item, um, from six hundred eighty-five thousand, um, to seven hundred sixteen thousand for the month. So a little bit higher than we anticipated for this month, but we're getting really close on our modeling as well. So that means that, um, through the rest of the year, we should, um, see fairly, um, consistent projections, um, compared to what we had in. But like the mayor had said, it's a very, um, interesting year and we're flying the plane as we're building it. So, um, so still stay tuned and we're just ready to be nimble as we move forward as well. Um, so, uh, just briefly on, uh, year-to-date, um, overall change in year-to-date, uh, sales tax was, uh, fourteen point four percent or six hundred thousand, um, which was very favorable, favorable as well. Um, so online sales is the main driver there and some of the retail sales, um, and, uh, local, local liquor sales and retail food. Um, any questions on the sales tax report?
Uh, good work. Keep it going.
Um, yep, so just, you know, we're just hopeful that we're giving you the information you need as we move forward to, to just continue to be nimble. And, um, so that's the whole, whole purpose here. So thank you.
It should, uh, be reflected favorably in our stock price out there with Town of Basalt.
Well, yeah, I didn't think we were going for a public offering this year, um.
Yeah, maybe not yet. So any questions for Kristy on the, uh, sales tax report? Comments? Uh, high fives? Uh, yeah, it's, it's, thank you. It's really, uh, obviously valuable and important information. Um, and I think, probably speaking for the councils, um, this is kind of, uh, an embarrassment of riches, really. I mean, we're, we're doing great in a sea of anxiety and uncertainty. And, um, so I, I just hope that the, the public understands that we take this seriously. Um, you know, this, this, this money's going to be used very carefully to sustain us through some turbulence that undoubtedly is coming our way. So, um, we're fortunate that we are in the circumstance that we are, but, you know, we're going to be pretty careful about how we allocate dollars and, uh, make sure that, um, we, uh, are prepared for what may be coming our way. So, um, thanks for all that.
A publicly announced high five.
Oh. Thank you, thank you, John. I appreciate that.
Uh, so if, if there are no further questions, then, uh, we're moved to, Kristy stays up. We're going to discuss the budget revenue estimate.
Yeah, so this is where it gets, starts to get exciting as we start to talk about our ensuing budget year. Um, you know, um, and it's going to be an interesting one because if we have, um, additional revenues, um, as, as well, we have a lot of growth in the town, um, too, that, that require, requires some thinking around how we prioritize those needs. So, um, I think that that's going to, you're going to find an interesting twist on this year's budget, um, with all of the building that's going on over, in the town and, and how we continue to grow and, um, and what we're looking at doing. A great example of that is, um, looking at the public works facility, which is, is of course a growth issue as much as it is a, um, deferred maintenance issue from the past. Um, so there's a couple of things going on there, but, um, but yeah, that's just one example, um, of a, a definite need that has been put off for a long time in the town. So, um, so it's going to be interesting to balance that. But for now, revenues, um, the first thing I wanted to note, um, and that's why I put this, um, upfront in the, the cover letter here, but I just want to star and highlight this. Um, the general fund, um, 2021 revenues are looking to increase, um, by seven hundred thirty-six thousand. But there's, um, some parts of that that are not, um, recurring. They're one-time. And I'm going to explain quickly to the public and, um, council why it's important to break out your recurring, um, revenues from your one-time revenues. Uh, your recurring revenues are what you can use for your operational costs, such as salaries and software costs that continue year after year after year. You, you want to make sure that your operations are able to sustain themselves. And that's why you want to break this down a little further than just look at, looking at a total number. Um, secondly, there's other parts of this in here that are truly financing proceeds. And that's just, uh, pretty much a pastor on our budget. So, so without taking that into account, you would think, wow, we've got all this extra money. But, but, you know, it doesn't, I mean, it's favorable and, and I'm grateful for that. Um, but it's not seven hundred thirty-six thousand in recurring operations favorable. Um, so, so just basically, um, to break that down, we have, um, a dump truck, um, that we're looking at purchasing next year. Um, we just delayed that because of the COVID uncertainty into the next year's budget, um, that we have to show as, as financing proceeds in our revenue. Uh, then secondly, we have, um, building permit fees above the norm, mostly Stedman Clinic. Um, so, I mean, that's going to be well over six hundred thousand for next year. And we're not going to track at that rate, um, throughout, um, time. So we just want to keep that at about a three hundred and fifty thousand dollar rate, um, as recurring right now, um, for our building permits into the future. And then there's a, there's a one-time grant of thirty-five thousand in the budget. Um, and then, which is of course an in and an out. And then, um, the other operational, which is your recurring increase, is what, what we were just talking about, is a hundred and seventy-four thousand. So those are, that's the addition that we're anticipating in the budget right now based upon all our assumptions, that's going to, um, show that, that revenue is going to continue. So, um, so that's a very important number to remember there. Okay? Um, the one thing, um, as far as council, um, I mean, obviously we'll have lots of conversations around the budget, but the most important part is we're planning to look at really is our sales tax number. Um, we anticipate our sales tax to come in at around twelve percent over budget for 2020. Right now, as I just, um, presented in the prior, um, presentation, it's looking at fourteen point four percent, um, year-to-date. Um, so twelve percent is, um, is a slight decline from that, um, which kind of tracks with what we saw in our August trend. Um, so that, that's a pretty reasonable assumption, given everything we know right now, but we'll have to continue. So that, that's a pretty reasonable assumption, given everything we know right now, but we'll have to continue to be nimble. So, but, but what we're looking at doing for 2021 is budgeting 6% lower than that 12% increase in projection for 2020. So 6% below our 2020 projection. The reasons why we want to look at doing something like that is, number one, is what the mayor was just discussing. There's a lot of uncertainties around, in our economy that we wanna really be cautious before we start to think that some of the sales tax that's been in a weird year is gonna continue year over year over year. A great example of that is in our retail food industry. We have a couple of large stores, obviously, and they posted, I mean, all of our stores posted in that sector, great sales because people were purchasing a lot of retail food at the beginning of the year during the front of pandemic. We don't know how consistent that's gonna continue. Secondly, is, is just the economy. So, so there's a lot of uncertainties that we are budgeting this 6% lower. We do believe that a 6% increase is reasonable, given that we have the online sales. That will be a recurring sales tax number. So we're hoping that that hits the middle, but wanted more conversation with council on that. Okay? And let's see here. Do, oh, and restricted funding. The only thing I'll say on our restricted funding is that that is something that can, that has a lot of timing issues with it. There's no recurring funding, if you will, within our restricted funding except for post, which is still used for capital projects. So, so this is more like, you would treat this more like your one-time in and out kind of grant funding, if you will, because you're looking and waiting for that funding to come in from various sources before you use it on a one-time basis to improve something in the town in accordance with how that's supposed to be used. Any questions so far? Okay, wonderful. So the one thing I wanna note here on property tax, so on this line here, is you know, note that I'm not decreasing our property tax number for next year. And I know we've got a Gallagher issue coming onto the ballot to repeal Gallagher. Actually, if that does not pass at a statewide level, then we would anticipate for the 2022 fiscal year that we'd see roughly a $100,000 decline in our property tax as the assessed valuation goes down from approximately 7.15% for residential down to 5.88%. About an 18% hit for the residential side of our assessment. So just so you know that that's out there for next year, but we really don't know. It's an uncertainty. So I'm still considering it recurring revenue at this point in time. General sales tax, when you look at the numbers, we're looking at 286,000 over 2020 budget versus 2021 budget. That's that 6%, 6% increase we were just talking about there. Okay? I'm not gonna go through all these, but just the highlights. So I wanted to tell you too, the general sales tax, about 1% increase is roughly $47,000 increase to our, our general fund. And there's also about 24,000 increase to our post-fund, okay, for revenue. Building permits, we budgeted 350,000 for 2020, which is what we try to, try to stay at. But we've had a few years that have been higher than that. We don't, we don't wanna show that as recurring, so we, we just try to, to watch that very closely and, and consider that one-time expense, or revenues for one-time expense for the, any amount over 350,000. Okay? There's, other than that, we're, we're, like with our pool, we're hopeful that we're gonna continue moving forward as though COVID does not exist anymore. That's how we budgeted a lot of our, our fees in and our budgeting because we just, we don't wanna take those expenses out because we want to realize that at some point, we're gonna go back to normal here and hopefully sooner than later. Funds are a very small part of our budget. Interest earnings are gonna be, this might even be high because we're purchasing the Salt River Park, we're helping to cough with the 942,000. Sorry. And hit something. And then there's a lot of the use of cash we have on those one-time purchases on our restricted funding that impact our interest earnings there. Okay? So then, any questions on that? Okay. I wanna note one other thing. I'm not gonna go through the restricted funding in this much detail because it is one-time items, but we'll, we'll go, be sure to go through that in a lot more detail as we start to talk about expenses for restricted funding and those kinds of things when it becomes a lot more important. But I wanna note this, this 12,668,000 dollar number here under total general and restricted funding for revenues. I know there's a couple of council members that were, have their eye on the Tabor limits for this year because we had a ballot initiative last year, so we're limited to 14,340,000 in Tabor revenue for the year, for the entire town, for the general fund and the restricted fund. And we're looking at coming in about 12.7 million. So you could see we're way below that. And that's thanks to a lot of work from our legal counsel and from staff, from Susan, Ryan, in retooling some revenues for developer contributions and other things so that we can make sure that we have quite a margin to make sure we just don't come anywhere close to that limitation. Any questions?
What, Christie, what would be the cap under Tabor for that total general and restricted combined? Is that the 14 million dollar number? Is that the red line for us?
That's correct. 14,340,000, yes.
So we have some free board in there at 12.6, okay?
So just, I just wanted to bring it back because I knew it was a question.
Yeah, I, I can't offer specific, any specific amendments. The only sort of anecdotal observation I would make is about, be interesting here, what are the counselors think? But it, September, I think, could be a surprising month from a sales tax revenue standpoint. In my years, I've never seen a busier September. So we had significant delta in, in June, July and August. September could really surprise us because, you know, I think in the past 10 years, kids have gone back to school, maybe the third week of August. And first of September, you could shoot a cannon down Midland Avenue and, and the entire month of September's been very busy. Restaurants have been doing well. Weather's been good. So just keep an eye, we won't know till October sometime, but it's gonna be really kind of interesting to observe. So, you know, this could be our, our new reality here where the, the summer activity kind of continues into the fall a little bit more. It should be obviously quite a boon to the town.
Yes. And, and just an interesting note is the August sales tax are one month behind. So that was actually for sales that were recorded in July.
Yeah.
Still haven't seen the impacts of fire and, and all those kinds of things with the closure of the highway.
Yeah, August could surprise to the downside. Okay. Would you, any comments from council? Do you have more, Christie? Or would you like comments, questions on the assumptions here?
Yeah, yeah.
Counselors? Yeah.
I just, I, I like where Christie's going. I like where we're being a little more conservative because, you know, the, the reality is it's easier to forecast back up than to forecast back down. We just don't know. We've had really good weather. But I think August might surprise us in a way because we had some pretty bad smoke days. And I know that impacted, you know, some of the stuff. But September, the weather's been phenomenal, so that could be up. You know, October's gonna come and it's gonna start cooling down and it's gonna be interesting. And also, you know, if you read the news, there's gonna be, there is already, they're starting to see a surge in Corona. And I now know more people here who have the virus. So I do think, you know, being conservative overall is a better place to be. I like that we're forecasting up. We're not forecasting negative. But I don't wanna be too excited about what's happening and, and continue that because I really like the fact that through this whole pandemic, you know, we forecasted, you know, potentially for pretty negative things. And it's nice to have a surprise. I just don't know if that's magically gonna just continue. And I know there's still gonna be some businesses that are hurting. And I still wanna see us, you know, as, as we move along, when we start looking at the salt parks and other things. I still wanna look at, you know, how to, how to, how to really help boost. You know, I love the fact that we're doing the box thing for rental assistance, but I do wanna see how we can continue to help because I do believe, you know, not many people are really gonna wanna sit outside. And I think if there's a surge in coronavirus, not many people are gonna wanna sit inside. So it's, it could be, it could be an interesting time. So I do appreciate where Christie is going with the numbers.
Thank you.
Additional comments from council? All right, Christie, thank you very much. Thanks, Gary, for the contribution. So with that, we will turn to our council actions portion of the agenda. First up is a public hearing, reading of ordinance number 18, series of 2020, an ordinance of the Town Council, Town of Passau, Colorado, to reinstate and amend the approvals associated with ordinance number six, series of 2018, granting site plan and special review approvals for the property at Levin and Durox Lane, Passau. Sarah?
Hi, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Sorry, that's quite a mouthful of a title there.
Looks like Red Cunningham is joining us also. I see him on there.
Exactly. I was just about to introduce Mr. Cunningham. He is the applicant, as well as the owner of the Levin and Durox. As you mentioned, this is the first reading of ordinance number 18, requesting the reinstatement and amendment of the special review and site plan approval that was granted by council through ordinance six, 2018. I'm gonna do a quick screen share, if you don't mind, get a brief presentation here. Okay. Does everybody see that?
Yeah.
Well, show if I can do it that way. Here we go. Okay. So just to orient everyone to the location of the property, it's this triangular shaped parcel. It's along Willetts Lane. We would be heading north this way towards the town center. This is located, it's lot four, sorry, of the Passau Industrial Park. Right at the edge of the industrial park area, it's Zoned Industrial PUD. And it's the home to Mr. Cunningham's business with his helpers, Disaster Restoration. This is what's currently on the lot. It's currently improved with two single-story buildings. There's one primary building, the larger building, that is the business. And the second is a storage shed that's associated with the business. In 2018, council granted site plan and special view approval that would allow three residential units to be constructed above that primary building on the site of the second floor, as well as the addition of 275 square feet of commercial storage space that would be added to that primary building. This is the 2018 approved site plan. Site plan was approved with seven, seven parking spaces associated with the industrial use on the site that are accessed from the existing gate onto Durox, as well as six residential parking spaces. And those residential parking spaces are at the rear of the site and those were to be accessed through lot three. They're actually on the site, but accessed through lot, the neighbor and lot three to the north. Unfortunately, the, there's a change of hards with the neighbor and Mr. Cunningham was unable to complete that access agreement, you know, prior to the site plan being recorded. So that 2018 approval required the site plan to be recorded within 180 days of the approval. The applicant knew he was unable to complete that access agreement. He needed to rework the site plan and so ultimately the site plan was not recorded, which is why we're asking for that reinstatement portion of the request tonight. The applicant has returned with a new site plan in 2020. All of the parking is on the site, does not require any access agreements to contain the parking on the site. There are the six parking spaces associated with the residential use, access directly out of Durox Lane. And there are five parking spaces down here associated with the industrial use. And you'll notice there was two parking spaces for the industrial use that were dropped between this 2018 site plan that had these two up towards the top of the property and between this 2020 site plan. So that brings us into how parking is calculated from site parking. And it's calculated per use. The residential use is calculated per bedroom with one-bedroom units generating 1.5 spaces, rounded up to two to create an actual space, the two parking spaces. And a two-bedroom unit also requires two parking spaces. So the residential unit, or the residential use is, is accommodated by those six parking spaces between the 2018 and 2020 plan. Now, the industrial use, the parking is calculated based on floor area. And so per the code calculation, the industrial use will require five spaces. And so those have been accommodated at the front of the site. In the 2018 plan, there was room for two additional parking spaces on site. So the, the applicant and his team just kind of decided to go ahead and throw in those two additional parking spaces up there to the Northwood site near that, near that primary building. And that's how it was approved. Steph is, is supportive of the, the new location for the residential parking spaces, but has, wants to ensure that those spaces are really used for that residential use as intended. So Steph has drafted some conditions that would require that used to be only, the parking space is only to be used by the residential use. They will be signed. They would be assigned to each individual unit, delineated with wheel stripes, wheel stops as well as striping. And it would also include a condition that no, the parking spaces would, would not be able to store non-operational vehicles for any length of time. So to enhance the pedestrian experience on the site, Steph has recommended that the applicant provide a protected pedestrian pathway that extends from the rear of the site in this area adjacent to the stairway to the upper store of residential use. It goes through that existing fence by way of a new gate to that pocket park, existing pocket park beyond. Here's to show you where it would roughly come out somewhere in this area. And it would continue on to the Willetts Trail that begins just, just north of this stop sign. We believe this would really enhance that tenant experience on the site as well as, it would provide some protection from the industrial traffic by being protected by way of a fence or some kind of low wall that would prevent, you know, vehicles from, from being able to interfere with that pathway. Steph did discuss whether or not to require the applicant to install a sidewalk along Durox Lane adjacent to the residential parking. However, you know, if you see this, this Google image here, you'd see where the sidewalk would ultimately end here at Willetts Lane. And that would just really give a user nowhere to go at this point. There's not a crosswalk here. So they need to be crossing potentially busy street over to the Willetts Trail or headed up towards that stop sign where they could access the Willetts Trail. So ultimately, we decided that the safer route would be to provide that pedestrian pathway through the site that takes you along to that Willetts Trail. The applicant is interested in providing some updates to the building's facade. And this, these are some of the renderings that council saw in the approval, the 2018 approval. Steph has created a condition that the architecture should remain consistent with what was seen in the 2018 approval. Please note that the, the parking down here is not what would be Please note that the, the parking, uh, down here is not, uh, what would be proposed with the twenty twenty. This was the twenty twenty, uh, sorry, the twenty eighteen parking. Um, so there's an image associated with that. But essentially, the architecture would be remaining the same. So staff has solicited comments from referral agencies. And these are largely consistent with those that were received in twenty eighteen. A couple additions include, um, Mid Valley Metro District has asked the applicant to work with them to verify that the current line that services that property is adequate to service three additional residential units. And the fire district, uh, voiced support of the new site plan and the parking configuration, as well as the pedestrian travel through the site. I also want to note that the applicant, uh, in twenty eighteen was required to complete a water agreement that was associated with allowing the town to use water supplied by the applicant, uh, to water that pocket park that's adjacent to, uh, Mr. Cunningham's site. And that agreement has been completed and recorded with Eagle County, uh, that was done back in twenty eighteen. The staff is supportive of the applicant's request to reinstate and amend approvals that were granted in twenty eighteen. Uh, the proposed housing increases the attainable and workforce stock within the town. Uh, staff finds this to be appropriate use of infill down the edge of the industrial area and along an established pedestrian path. It has close proximity to employment centers. And it adds to the diversity of the town housing. And staff is also supportive of the amendments made to the site plan and, um, appreciates the parking being fully within the site. Uh, this matter went before the P and Z, the last, at the last meeting, and it was ultimately approved by a vote, uh, the recommendation was approved for council by a vote of six to one. So at this point, I would recommend that the council hear from the applicant, you know, and ask any questions that staff and applicants may have. And then this is a public hearing to recommend opening up the public comment. And ultimately, uh, staff does recommend approval of the ordinance upon first reading and to set the second reading for the date on October thirteenth. So that I will stop sharing the screen and send it over to Red, if he'd like to include anything.
Uh, no, again, Sarah, you, uh, pretty much covered everything very thoroughly. Um, sometimes looking at it from up above on that, um, to see how that would access that trail, sometimes I feel like that's a better way to see it than looking at it from the street view. But again, you covered everything very well. I'll answer any questions you guys might have.
Any questions of council, of, uh, Sarah or Red Cunningham? Applicant? Okay, uh, we don't have questions. I, I have one minor curiosity. Uh, the staff originally recommended a sidewalk and then reconsidered because it really posed some safety hazards, apparently. Uh, but, you know, we preserve maybe the right to revisit that in the future. Is there an easement for that sidewalk?
Uh, well, let's say answer that. But what it came down to, Bill, was it's kind of a sidewalk to nowhere, if you put it there. If, if we, the way that they came up with the back walkway of getting on to the existing path is where there's already a three-way stop sign and an existing crosswalk. So that kind of gets you to the place you want to be. As opposed to bringing you out to the front of the building and going the long way around the barn, so to speak.
Yeah, okay, that sounds, that sounds fine.
Mm-hmm. I do not believe that there is an existing easement. Um, Susan, if I am misspeaking, please let me know. But along, you're talking about between the property and Durox. Is that correct?
Yeah, so it was like you originally had it along Durox Lane there.
Yeah, that was something that was considered. It seemed a bit, um, onerous to put that also on, on the applicant. But no, I don't believe that there is an easement close there.
Um, questions, comments, council? Uh, hearing none.
Oh, Glenn has his hand up, sorry.
Um, I know that it appeared in the, like, reading previous review of this that Red was not opposed to having people under sixteen years of age, and it was more of a staff issue. And I understand the park placement, younger kids couldn't go there. But is this putting too much restriction on this particular? Is there anything wrong with having young kids there? I know where it's at and its location and everything, but I also know that within that neighborhood, you have plenty of other, like, park place townhomes is three blocks away, four blocks away. No restriction on young kids. Just curious. More of a question.
Did you want me to respond to that, Glenn?
Yeah, go ahead, Sarah.
I do know that that is within the, the land code, that that is a part of it, um, within the industrial portion of the code. Um, so if that's something that council wants to consider a change on, we can, we can have that discussion, um, for sure. Um, we also have built into that original approval that, that Schuck would be able to do considerations if there's, you know, sometimes people circumstances change. I mean, we could envision, um, you know, somebody there with partial custody or, or something of that nature. And so, um, it is built in where Schuck would have some weigh in on that and we'll get it by case by case basis.
You know, ultimately, I, I was just gonna add that ultimately, um, I think what was weighing in from Red's standpoint is that we would charge impact fees, um, if there were children there for, for the school. And, um, and so those weren't going to be applicable if we, um, if we, if we kept the restriction as it was, which was not to allow, uh, people under sixteen years of age. So it was gonna cost him money. So ultimately, I think that kind of weighed in, uh, to Red kind of going along with our restriction, uh, you know, which really, you know, originated from staff. How the code reads is that, uh, generally, children are, um, prohibitive in the industrial zone district. And through the special review process, uh, they could be permitted. And I guess we were, we were kind of thinking that in this very industrial neighborhood, it wasn't a great place to introduce children. And, uh, so we were, uh, recommending that, uh, that we not permit them.
And Red, do you feel that's restrictive on? I'm just asking. I just, I want this all to be like, no. Are you feeling that that's restrictive? Obviously, you don't care because you're good with it.
Uh, I accepted it because it was kind of the rule of the, of what people wanted to do. And so I accepted it. But frankly, as an individual, I feel like it's gonna be kind of a weird thing. Having people live there and someone gets pregnant and then telling them now that they have a baby, they gotta move out. Or somebody meets somebody they, and they want to get married, and they were gonna move in there, and the person has a child, and you can't tell them they're not welcome. I just find it's gonna lead to some weird things. Am I willing to do it? Sure, I am. If that's what it takes to get the approvals, absolutely, I'll make it work.
Uh, Gary?
Yeah, um, I remember talking about this a couple of years ago. And, you know, it's, uh, it's a tough one. And it's kind of funny when you go back and reread, you know, uh, the P and Z's discussion on this. And then I kind of remember where we were at. Um, my question is for, for, you know, if, if we, if we did want to reinstate the kids, Red, you're comfortable with reinstating the school fees, right?
Of course. But, and I, I'm, I'm game either way. The fees, you like, are kind of a zero sum game. I think it opens up to more people. And you like, if I have an employee that has a kid and I want to give him housing, I thought I'd have to tell him no would be kind of weird.
And, and I started thinking about, like, how do we enforce this over time? We're putting a lot of enforcement, code enforcement things on our staff. And that's what I worry about, too. And it's a question for staff that, you know, really, over time, having you guys, you know, be the enforcers of all these different restrictions we put on the properties. You know, at the time, I definitely supported no kids there. But, you know, with, you know, rethinking this, because looking at all the other applications that we have approved with restrictions in it, I just don't know how staff can keep track of this and, and really enforce this. And then I know as soon as Red has an employee that magically has kids, because that's what we do as humans. And are we gonna really, uh, you know, as a council, want to take those people out? So that's why I'm rethinking it now. Um, we do have the special review ability to remove that. But I, I want to see it from staff's perspective, um, where they, where they feel on this. If we did go the way of allowing kids to be there? And to answer the question on all these restrictions we're putting on everything?
Well, I guess the other restrictions that we would talk about if we were gonna allow kids, um, is that where we have, the other issue that kind of comes into play is the industrial uses that you get in an industrial zone. So that we get complaints, um, by way of example in the, uh, industrial park in Southside, uh, where we have paint and odors. And so the residents start complaining about the uses. So, you know, what the other thing that we do is we, um, you know, like in Southside Four, uh, where we have more of a transition use, then you start regulating the uses so that you don't get the tenants to complain. So if you wanted us to explore it, we could bring back some recommendations. But we weren't as worried about the enforcement because we did allow the out with BAC, um, you know, that could weigh in on, on particular circumstances. Um, but I think if we were going to allow kids, we would want to turn it the other way, that, you know, you couldn't complain about odors or noise or, or things like that that you get in an industrial area. So, you know, keep in mind, we don't have very, very many really true kind of industrial zones in the town. Uh, so we were kind of trying to prevent them from becoming, you know, kind of yuppie, uh, areas with, uh, you know, less expensive housing that starts to regulate the type of uses in there. But again, as Sarah said, you know, it's, it's really a council, um, discussion ultimately. Um, you know, I think the P and Z minutes probably reflect the discussion, you know, pretty well, uh, at the P and Z level. And we had a pretty big discussion again, you know, earlier. Um, so I, I don't know. It would, if you wanted to allow kids, it would be good to get the P and Z to weigh in on it. But I don't know if it's really meritorious to do that loop. But ultimately, I guess it's, it's.
And if I can inter, if I, if I can interject, I'll save all the steps. I'm happy with where it's at. It's sixteen, under sixteen's not allowed. Glenn, I appreciate you bringing it up because it's worthy of discussion. But I, I would tell you that I'm happy right where it's at, and I'll accept it and with, with my blessing.
I think, like, my biggest point is, are we adhering to the master plan? Are we making sure we have that, you know, we have infill? We have places that are for employees, of families? You know, are we, are we doing our duty to make sure that we're providing the best possible housing going forward? You know, because, I mean, under sixteen can get it. I live in Valley Pines, I'm not three blocks from where you're at, Red.
Right.
Kids, kids are allowed to have here. Um, you know, I smell the, the, uh, whatever the hell you call it. Every time the distillery is cooking up their little barley and everything like that. Does anybody complain here? No. I, I just wanted it to be out there for discussion. I have no feeling one way or another. I don't have kids, but other council members do have kids, and they might have a point of view on.
Hey, thank you. Um, additional comments? Ryan Slack, do you, are you, are you, uh, wanting to comment?
Yeah, I would just say, I, I agree with what Glenn's bringing up. And I don't want to hinder him from starting, if I, I feel like that's what Red's worried about. But I would like to consider what Glenn brought up. I mean, I know that area very well, too. And, you know, I, I don't think, I think people, they think of kids under sixteen, that kids are gonna be running around nonstop. There's plenty of other places that they can go play, like Glenn said, within two to three blocks from there. Um, you know, i- i- if there's people there, whether it's kids or not, that, that's not a very high industrial zone of that section. You know, maybe they'll get deliveries for, uh, the hardware store. But, you know, I don't, there, there's not a lot of garages in that area.
Yeah.
On that corner. So i- if, if it comes to where we can approve and, and allow that in second reading, we address the, the age gap, you know. I don't want to slow him down, but I, I do agree with that.
Yeah. Um, let me ask point of order here, um, oh, this is a public hearing. So would this be an appropriate time for us to, uh, hear from the public? Let's do that, Susan.
So I started the clock, just a reminder, um, to email planning@basalt.net or text nine seven oh, nine eight seven, seventy ten, with your name and your phone number. Um, at the first, uh, in two thousand and eighteen, we had minor comments regarding the irrigation, which we incorporated into the approval. And in twenty twenty, we did not get any, uh, public at the P and Z meeting. Um, and before the meeting, we didn't get any additional comments that anybody wanted to speak at the meeting. Um, and we have some time left on our clock.
Okay, I will open the public hearing, uh, for, uh, ordinance number eighteen, twenty twenty. And I know that the records show the public hearing was opened at seven twenty-three.
And technically, I've been running the clock for about a, a minute before that, but.
Yeah. While we're waiting, uh, make use of the time, uh, when we contemplate a motion here, uh, Jeff, which, if you would clarify, I, I assume that, uh, we could move to approve the ordinance and amend it to, i- if a counselor wanted to put forward an idea to amend the age restriction or a- any element of it, we could do that without going back to P and Z? Or is this gonna be a re-referral if, uh, we amend this in any sort of substantive way?
So I think the, the planning commission made its recommendations to council. So a motion on first reading with an amendment would be appropriate.
Okay. All right.
Okay, so our time is over, and we did not get any emails. And, um, we didn't get any text messages that anyone wanted to speak.
All right, good deal. So I'll close the public hearing, seven twenty-five. Um, and at this point, uh, I would entertain a motion from council to approve on first reading ordinance number eighteen of twenty twenty.
I'm happy to make the ordinance. And I'm, I'm gonna, in my ordinance, I am gonna, you know, I'm gonna say that, you know, I, I, um, that, that we look, I, I'd like to, I'd like to look at this. I, I don't want to slow this down. And Red, this is not meant to slow this down in any way, shape, or form. I just want us to make the right decision. And I want us to be able to discuss it as a council with a little more staff review. So, um, you know, really, truly, I look at this now, and I'm like, this, this might be a place for us just to allow kids there so we don't get any weirdness and, and from you trying to rent this out to employees and everything else. So I'm gonna make a motion that the town council approve ordinance number eighteen, series of two thousand and twenty, on first reading, and continue to set the public hearing for second reading on October thirteenth, two thousand and twenty, with, um, an amendment to review the age restriction on, just, uh, on the units. Thank you.
Okay, moved in second, discussion on the motion? Hearing none. Pam, please call the roll.
Absolutely. Okay, let's begin with Bill Infante.
Yes.
Thank you, Bill. David Knight?
Yes.
Thank you. Glenn Drummond?
Yes.
Thank you, Glenn. Gary Cunningham?
Yes.
Thank you, Gary. Elise Hodel?
Yes.
Thank you. Bill Kane?
Yes.
And Ryan Slack?
Yes.
Thank you, Ryan. Motion carries.
All right, thank you, Red. Thanks, Sarah. Uh, we'll see you October fourteenth, is it the date?
Thirteen.
Yeah.
Thirteen.
The thirteenth, so, okay.
I think so.
Thanks. Keep the, keep the golf courses open, Red.
I'm working on it, babe. I'm working on it. I'm working on it.
Okay. Uh, our next order of business is the first reading of ordinance number nineteen, series of two thousand and twenty. Ordinance of the town council, town of Basalt, approving a contract to buy and sell real estate with Sheldon Properties LLC for the purchase of Lot More Mid Valley Center, PUD, Basalt, Colorado. Ryan and Jeff.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll jump into this one and, uh, Jeff can, can follow up. Um, but want to give a little bit of, uh, background, uh, both for the benefit of the council, which of course you all have heard some of this, but then, um, for the benefit of the public. Um, so one of the things that I always preach, uh, as a town manager is that it's really important to do the fundamentals well, um, before, uh, anything else. Um, you know, we're a service organization first and in my opinion, Public Works, um, is at the core of providing those services. And that's especially true because they're so visible out in the community. Uh, so Public Works, um, for those out there, um, that may not be aware, you know, that's the, the crew of, uh, folks that take care of our parks and gardens, um, our arboretum, um, our streets, so they do the plowing in the winter and do the maintenance in the summertime. Um, our affordable housing buildings are, are maintained by them as well as our municipal, uh, buildings like town hall, um, heat department, et cetera. Um, and then of course, uh, they, uh, provide safe drinking water, um, into, uh, a portion of town. Uh, so they have a lot on their plate. Um, back in two thousand and six is as far back, um, as I found, uh, a study where the town began to, um, look at, uh, properties and, and, you know, knew there was a need for a, a new Public Works facility. Um, we'd been growing, uh, the Public Works facility we are in today, um, is the Public Works facility we were in before there was a Willets, before there was a South Side, um, in the form that it's in today. So, um, we've certainly done quite a bit of growing. Um, when I looked back, uh, we've added about a thousand people to our population just within the town limits. Uh, but certainly we're seeing a lot more people that benefit from our services who come and shop here in town, come and recreate, uh, and so we want to make sure that we're able to keep up with that. Um, and, uh, one of the other things to note is recently, within the last, uh, several months, we've lost one of our locations where we were able to store some equipment, um, which is over in Crowe Mountain. That, uh, building, um, had a roof that was caving in and, and, um, some asbestos issues. And so, um, we pulled some of our equipment out of there. Um, so we have continued to look for properties over the years. I mentioned back in two thousand and six, we identified the need. In two thousand and sixteen, we actually have an appraisal from a different property, um, that didn't end up working out, but, um, uh, that was over in the Willets Lane, uh, area. And back in two thousand and nineteen, uh, we brought this up to council, uh, when we were working on our strategic framework. And, uh, at that time, council confirmed, uh, their commitment for looking into a, uh, a new Public Works location. And then of course, in two thousand and twenty, when we did our work plan, uh, council again confirmed, uh, that and provided direction to staff to, to look for a location. Um, earlier in two thousand and twenty, um, we actually identified a property that came to our attention. Um, it is a really good location. It's centrally located, right there on Original Road. It allows us access both into Willets, uh, and into Old Town, uh, Basalt and the South Side. Um, if you, uh, have seen some of our equipment, it's not exactly, uh, the best to be taking on to the highway such as a Vaco or the little street sweeper, uh, that maxes out at about twenty-five miles an hour. And so having, having a good location is certainly important for, uh, for us to be able to provide, um, uh, service and do it so in, in a quick, in a quick manner so that, uh, we're not wasting time, uh, moving equipment around. Um, so we did do our due diligence on this property. Uh, everything came back in, in good order. And earlier, uh, with the previous council, uh, we had direction to put the property under contract. And that was in about the March timeframe. We did a, a first, uh, reading on an ordinance and then of course, COVID hit. Uh, so we were, uh, into an uncertain time, uh, about a month after that. And in April, we had a new council elected and, um, the new council on their very first meeting were faced with a pretty tough decision, which was going to be a second reading of an ordinance to purchase a property. Um, and that came when, um, there was quite a bit of economic uncertainty, uh, as we talked about, uh, earlier tonight. Um, but since that time, um, we've certainly learned a lot about our, our local economy and, um, have done a lot of, uh, projecting with our revenues. Um, we've also updated our reserve policy in that time and, um, things are looking pretty good financially for the town, as we talked about. Um, so we now do feel confident that we can proceed with the purchase of, of this property, uh, at this time. Uh, and, you know, I think it's important to note that we have been conservative with taxpayer money and are able to make this purchase, uh, with cash and still meet our reserve policy. Um, I think it is important to keep in mind that this purchase will outlast COVID-nineteen. Um, as, you know, government employees, we are tasked with both looking at today as well as twenty years from now. And to pass up an opportunity, um, with a location like this, um, for, uh, you know, a, a short-term gain or a short-term worry, I, I don't think is in our best interest just given where we are financially and all of the work we've done to, to make this purchase, um, with eyes wide open. Um, so, uh, in the end, uh, you know, staff is, is recommending that, uh, uh, council approve this, uh, purchase agreement on first reading. Um, and we're really excited for this move. And I know Boyd is here on the phone. Um, he might be, uh, dancing a little jig in the background there, um, depending on the outcome, but, um, thank you very much.
And Ryan, I'll just add briefly that the contract that was an exhibit to the ordinance, uh, was amended, uh, only slightly just to adjust a couple of the due diligence deadlines, uh, after a discussion with the seller. Um, and the contract has been, uh, executed by the seller and is subject to approval by town council.
Bill, you're on mute.
And Elise has her hand up. Oh, Bill, you're on mute, Mayor.
Yeah, I was munching on a salad. There are like some things you should never have to see, so, uh, I, I turned my mic off. So, Elise, I think you had your hand up.
Um, I'm just curious. Sorry about that. Um, I'm curious.
Bill, would you mind tuning? Bill Kane, that might be the source of the echo.
All right, let's try this again. Okay, that sounds better. Uh, I'm curious, uh, my understanding was that this property was under contract with another company, um, and then it fell through and became available again. And I'm just curious, uh, if we know what the reason was. Just want to make sure that there isn't some like deep dark secret we should know about.
You know, I, I don't know what the, the ultimate decision, um, by that company was. There's, um, uh, a, uh, an issue that they came and talked to us about that for us wasn't an issue in our due diligence, um, which is, uh, access through the site. Uh, there's contemplated, uh, with CDOT and access agreement, um, that would, um, allow for vehicular access between Willets Lane and Original Road there. Uh, and for, uh, for those folks, that was one thing that they brought up, asking us to, to, you know, basically work with CDOT to, to get rid of that condition. But, um, you know, we didn't feel like, um, that was, uh, a, an appropriate, uh, thing to do at the time. And, uh, it was also a, a three-party agreement, both, you know, between CDOT, the town and Eagle County as well. And so, um, uh, you know, we went through and, and did all the due diligence, as I said, and, uh, you know, nothing turned up that was going to be, um, a deal killer for us.
Okay.
Anyone else?
You're on mute. Bill, you're on mute.
Sorry about that. Yeah, I guess going back a, a year or so, when we first began contemplating this, I, I did have reservations and I guess, uh, I still have the same reservations, um, beginning with my reticence to enter into this type of a contract, which, which comes across to me as a sole source procurement and a non-competitive expenditure. And so, you know, the, the fact that we have not, um, publicized this in a manner and have not recruited other input from, um, real estate professionals is a little bit troubling. But I, I also have to note that when the project was first described or when the need for a management, uh, maintenance service area was first described, we were talking about a significantly larger parcel that was originally forecast to be needed. And so this one being significantly smaller invariably raises the question about whether this is going to be sufficient over the long haul. But on the same theme of size, it seems like an extraordinarily high price for a parcel that is, um, less desirable as, as we have previously discussed as council as well. There, there is some negatives to this, notwithstanding the fact that it is in the mid-valley. Um, but, um, so again, I'm concerned about that. But, um, having received input from local realtors and from valuation experts, there is a question about the cost. And so one recommendation would be to hire and contract a real estate professional to help us move forward with this and make an informed decision. But it's also impossible not to note that, again, there are a lot of alter. I'm not sure how much of, how much of that you missed.
Everything. Everything.
Bill, we lost you for a period of time.
Yeah, I had that feeling. I had a little connection interrupted. Thanks again to the wonderful quality of broadband service in the valley. Um, stop me if I'm going back too far, but when we originally looked at the need for a maintenance shed, we looked at a much larger parcel. This is much, much smaller. I don't understand how this is going to serve our long-term needs. Um, I would certainly feel a lot more comfortable if we did recruit a local real estate professional to assist us in identifying properties that might be better value, but also more suitable. But I guess the final point that I was making is that w- we have options in how we spend our money. And if we're going to spend two point three million to buy and improve this property, we're not spending two point three million on other things. And some of the other large ticket needs that we have discussed, albeit obliquely, are needs for a new town hall, desires from the, the police to co-locate with the town. And, um, again, this seems to subordinate all of those other concerns and needs at a very, very high price. And, um, therefore I have reservations.
Any other counselor, Gary?
Um, yeah, I mean, I, I want Ryan to really just, you know, to be, and Ryan Boyd to just explain the need for this because, you know, we talked about this. I, I, we do real estate, you know, stuff all the time and it is not, I mean, we do not need a real estate agent to help us with this. You can easily look at all the properties that are available out there. I think that's, uh, an absurd thing to think that a real estate agent is actually going to make this any better considering what we've looked at in the past. But, you know, I just want Ryan to respond to the adequacy employed of this site for what we need because this has been an ongoing need for the town for over fifteen years that I've been, you know, working in the town. Um, it's been like six different Public Works directors and they've all, this, this site that we have is not adequate to really serve the two parts of our town. And so if Ryan could just like respond to the size and Boyd, um, you know, I, I'd, I'd, I'd like us all to just not even go to the real estate piece because we do this all the time without real estate agents. And it, this has nothing to do with procurement. This is a real estate transaction that we as a town council can make. And I think personally, I'm in favor of helping Public Works finally get an adequate site so they could serve all parts of this town.
Uh, I could, I could respond to that and, um, Boyd could chime in. You know, I think one of the, the, um, elements of our due diligence was to do some, some schematics, um, which we had an engineer do to, um, you know, basically take stock of our equipment and do a, a layout on the site of where, um, you know, sheds could be located, um, both open shed and, uh, and closed, uh, and then, uh, you know, be able to, to store equipment out of the elements. Um, bear in mind that we will be keeping our existing facility, which is about an acre. Um, this adds to that, um, a little, uh, a little bit more than an acre. And, uh, you know, so we'll be able to operate out of, uh, out of both sites, um, giving us, you know, adequate space for some time to come. Um, we did, in fact, uh, look, um, as I mentioned earlier, you know, even dating back to two thousand and sixteen, at different sites around, um, the mid-valley. And, uh, you know, this, this turned up and, and, you know, uh, location, location, location. You know, we, we think that it's, it's a, a good spot for us to land. Um, there were a few other spots, um, one that was about a mile from the east entrance up valley. I mentioned that. Um, the, the issue with that is there's no light. And so I'd have staff both in town equipment and their own vehicles, um, crossing traffic, coming down valley without the benefit of a signal. And over time, that makes me uncomfortable. It was also probably a little too big, um, just adding management duties that, um, uh, aren't, you know, uh, keeping focus on, you know, the, the core town, uh, duties we have. Uh, we looked at some other sites right around the one, um, that we had, uh, or that we currently operate out of. Uh, Skeeco owns one that they had for sale. Um, but, you know, the, the location of that, just with the, the visibility and sort of the quality of, of, um, you know, the building that would probably be required there because of its visibility, um, you know, added, uh, expense. And it, it didn't necessarily gain us what we, what we were hoping for. Um, and then, uh, there's a site down in the, um, industrial park, uh, currently, um, that's occupied, but, you know, it, it would require, you know, probably a tear down because the bays are just too small to really fit our equipment into. Um, and, uh, um, uh, trying to think if there was a, another one we, we took a look at recently. Um, maybe Boyd can jog my memory on that. But, uh, you know, I think, I think the bottom line is, uh, this town, uh, has looked for a long time. And, and Bill, uh, Infante, you're right that there's been different discussions around co-location or other building needs. But if, if we wait until we find that, you know, perfect site, it, it just may never come. And we've got these needs today. Um, and, uh, you know, again, I think this one fell in our lap as, as being, you know, uh, one that checks a lot of the boxes for us. that checks a lot of the boxes for us. So, you know, I think we're pretty excited about it. Um, and, you know, I'd love to hear from Boyd, um, to see what, what he has to say as, as the person that's gonna be operating out of it.
Boyd, are you, what's up?
Yeah, can you hear me?
Yeah, just fine.
Okay. Uh, what I like about this site is centrally located, and the fact that it's already set up with, you know, the gravel, uh, decking, and is, uh, perfect for us to put some, uh, pole barns up. And the biggest thing with our equipment and our trucks and different things, it's not so much the snow, it's the sun that eats, uh, the plastics up and eats the equipment up, and, you know, that really costs us money going forward. If we could just get them out of, you know, not so much out of the weather, which, that's what we say, but if we could get them out of the sun, and, uh, you know, Ryan and I have explored that, about where we could put our, um, parking and get it out of the sun and get the best exposure and stuff. And centrally located, as you know, we're growing toward, uh, west of Salt, as they say. Um, you know, I think this, you know, uh, comes to a perfect location as far as being able for a service location. As Ryan said, our equipment, you know, is great equipment, but there's only, we're limited. We can't get out on Highway 82 and run it back and forth. We have to take the back trails, and we have to be conscious of how we move our equipment around. And this location works out perfect for that.
Okay. Glenn?
I'd just like to, you know, kinda cite the master plan, planning process. You know, Basalt was compared to a barbell, and you have east and you have west Basalt. And I think the ideal position about this piece of property is it's basically the handle of a barbell. It's dead center. I mean, it works really good. It provides a adequate function. It's 1.8 acres, you know? I, I think it's a very, very good fit for our long-term goal, and definitely what we're trying to achieve with the master plan.
Thank you, Glenn. Uh, David Knight?
Um, I'm not excited about our current economic outlook, but I see this as an opportunity that we need to take advantage of. Um, this problem has been there for a long time now, and we, like everybody's been saying, we have a, we have a, uh, a candidate parcel where we can solve this. So I think we need to take advantage of that opportunity. I'm supportive of it. Um, and appreciate the fiscal discipline that, along with the, the good fortune we've had, um, the last few months of the year to put us in this position. Uh, the only question I would have is, what's the history of the purchase price again? Can you refresh our memories on that, somebody? How we arrived at that?
So, we did have an appraisal done. Um, and so that appraisal, uh, came back, and it did not include some of the, um, the outbuildings that, um, we'll also be acquiring with it that will, that have utility for us. Uh, and so, uh, essentially, um, we're, we're right there with, with that appraisal. Um, and so, you know, it's a, it's a fair price, uh, from, from what, uh, the, uh, appraiser, who's from the valley, uh, gave, came back to us with.
Thanks, Glenn. Uh, Elise?
Just to follow up on that, and, and this price is the same price that we had originally negotiated with them?
It is, yeah.
Okay. And I have one, one more comment, um, um, to, uh, Glenn's point about the Basalt Master Plan. I'm looking back at the voting the public did on the, um, capital improvement ideas. And one of the things that folks voted on was for a new public works slash police facility, and they kind of lumped those together. Um, but also, there was a second category for workforce housing on the, the public works or police facility property. So I just want to be explicit that we are not planning to do workforce housing on such a small property, correct?
Yeah, that, that's not in the plans currently. Uh, and, and like you say, it's, you know, it's, uh, an acre on this particular, uh, site, a little over an acre. Um, and so I think, um, uh, just given the, the money we have for those improvements, you know, it wouldn't be contemplated at this, uh, initial stage of, of that.
Additional comments, questions from council? Uh, I'll offer a few. Um, you know, my, I, I intend to vote in favor of this, uh, action. Um, you know, I, I, my memory goes back to, uh, 10, 11 years ago. I've watched, uh, the painful sort of ferrying of equipment and personnel back and forth from our maintenance site, public works facilities on South Side, out to Willets. Uh, I mean, there's clearly an argument to be made that this will provide better service to a big section of our town and a good number of our citizens by getting more centrally located public, uh, works facilities. Um, so I think it's a great location. Um, I agree with many of Bill Infante's observations. However, I think we have to operate the town in real time. And this is a, a parcel that's well situated, it's of adequate size, it's fairly priced, and it'll allow our staff to move forward. I have supreme confidence in Ryan and Jeff and their ability to follow through on the, on, uh, the transaction. I got a chance to, as we all did, to read the, the receipt and option contract. Uh, it looks like it's pretty well thought out. Um, so, uh, I'm, I'm very comfortable with it. I think this is, uh, a great improvement, uh, and step forward in our strategic plan in terms of improving service to our citizens, and, uh, money well spent at a time when we can afford it. Uh, so, um, there are my thoughts. Um, if there are no additional comments, I would entertain a, uh, Jeff, oh, it's public hearing?
Uh, it, it's not, but I just wanted to make a quick, uh, legal procedural note that purchases of real property, um, are not subject to the town's procurement policy. And under the town charter, the, the town councils has the authority to approve the purchases of real property by ordinance without the need for election. So, I just wanted to make that, make sure that was clear and council was comfortable with that.
Great. Thank you for that important, uh, footnote. Um, so, um, this is a, will require, we didn't list it as a public hearing, but do we require a public hearing for first reading tonight, or no?
On second reading, Mayor.
Okay, good deal. Uh, so then, at this point, I would entertain a motion from, uh, from council. Uh, Glenn?
Mayor, I move that town council approve ordinance number 19, series of 2020 on first reading, and set the public hearing in second reading for October 13, 2020.
Second. Okay, been moved in second at ten. What'd you call the roll?
Be happy to. Okay, let's begin with Ryan Slack.
Yes.
Thank you, Ryan. Bill Kane?
Yes.
Bill Infante?
No, for the reasons cited.
Thank you. Gary Tenenbaum?
Yes.
Elise Hoddle?
Yes.
David Knight?
Yes.
And Glenn Drummond?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you very much. Uh, so we will take that back up again at second reading. Um, so our next order of business is ordinance number 20, series of 2020. It's an ordinance as town council, Town of Basalt, amending the 2020 budget. Uh, Ryan and Christie?
Sure. Um, I'll jump in. Christie, you can, uh, fill in if I miss something. Uh, but this is really, uh, part and parcel to, uh, the previous ordinance, uh, that authorizes the purchase. And this just goes and is a housekeeping issue to amend the budget accordingly, um, since this wasn't originally contemplated when we adopted the 2020 budget. Uh, so just something to do to stay in compliance with, uh, the law.
Okay, um. Questions of council? Hearing none. Uh, I'd entertain a motion.
Mayor, I move the town council, excuse me. Mayor, I move the town council approve ordinance number 20, series of 2020 on first reading, and set the public hearing at second reading for October 13, 2020.
For second?
I second.
Okay, been moved in second. Do we need a roll call? I think we do. Or not. Uh, please call the roll.
Yes, absolutely. Uh, let's begin with Gary Tenenbaum.
Yes.
Thank you. Elise Hoddle?
Yes.
Thank you. Bill Infante?
No, for the same reasons cited in the prior, uh, motion.
Thank you, Bill. Uh, David Knight?
Yes.
Glenn Drummond?
Yes.
Ryan Slack?
Yes.
And Bill Kane?
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Our next, uh, item is resolution number 33, series of 2020. It's a resolution of the town council of Basalt, Colorado, authorizing and directing payment to the arts campus at Willets-Tacaw of certain amounts under the amended and restated development invested rights agreement for Willets Town Center Plan Unit Development. Uh, Susan and Ryan?
Well, just as background, uh, the Willets developer was originally required to build a park on the Town Park Arts Parcel. That's the parcel where Tacaw's being built. And it didn't make sense for the town to require the developer to, to build a park, uh, when we wanted it to be used as a performing arts center. So when we, uh, approved some amendments a couple of years ago, we renegotiated, uh, with the developer, and we entered into this amended and restated development invested rights agreement for Willets Town Center. So, instead of having the developer build the park, uh, we negotiated that we would agree to cost estimates of what that park, uh, building the park would be. And once those, um, it was mutually agreed to, uh, the developer would pay the Town of Basalt. Uh, and we, part of that language said that we could use those funds for park improvements within Willets Town Center, including improvements to adjacent sidewalks and rights away. So immediately after we, uh, entered into that agreement, uh, Tacaw was looking for us to be able to turn those funds over to them, uh, once we agreed on the amount. And I think, um, Mayor Kane had kinda reported on the status of kind of our negotiations on that. We finally came to agreement that the developer, um, would pay us $250,000. Um, and so, instead of us, the developer paying us, and then us turning over the money to the developer, I mean, to, over to Tacaw, we thought it was a lot more efficient, uh, for the developer to turn the money directly over to Tacaw. Uh, and so that's what this resolution does. It does two things. One, uh, it approves, uh, the town allowing Tacaw to use those funds. And two, it says the developer will pay, uh, Tacaw directly. That also helps us with, um, what Christie's been talking about with Tabor. Uh, so those are the two things that the development agreement, I mean, the resolution does. And we've been in discussions with the Willets developer, and they are, they are agreeable to this. Uh, and we're, our attorney, Jeff Conklin, is working on the paperwork to accomplish that if the council approves the resolution. So, Ryan, is there anything else that you wanna add? Um, staff was supporting, you know, the-
Uh, the only other, the only other thing I would say is that, um, we've also, you know, made Tacaw aware of, of this arrangement, and they're amenable. And then, they also understand that, uh, as far as taking that payment directly, they are still, uh, beholden to the obligations of it being used for the park-like features, um, uh, that are, uh, contemplated in the ordinance.
Yeah. Um, yeah, I think we did, uh, we had a favorable conversation with, uh, the developer, uh, contrib-, you know, with the Mariner Group. And, um, so, you know, we've, uh, I think this is ready to go. Um, questions, comments? Um, hearing none, I would, uh, entertain a motion to approve resolution number 33, series of 2020.
Mayor, I move that the town council approve resolution number 33, series of 2020.
Second. Uh, resolution, can we do a voice vote or a roll call?
Roll call.
Roll call. Please roll call the roll.
Okay, let's do it. Thank you. We'll begin with Bill Infante.
Uh, yes.
Thank you, Bill. Uh, Gary Tenenbaum?
Yes.
Thank you. David Knight?
Yes.
Uh, Glenn Drummond?
Yes.
Thank you. Elise Hoddle? I'm sorry. Elise, can you hear me?
Oh, yes, I think I talked over you.
Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you. Uh, Ryan Slack?
Yes.
Thank you, Ryan. And Bill Kane?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion is unanimous. Thank you.
Okay. Uh, next item is resolution number 34, series of 2020. It's a resolution of Town of Basalt, Colorado, supporting passage of statewide amendment B regarding Gallagher repeal and Eagle County ballot issue regarding Gallagher stabilization. So, Ryan, kinda tell us where we are.
Sure, here we go. Uh, so, yes, as, as you recall, um, uh, probably two months ago, we had a conversation, uh, about, uh, supporting the Gallagher, um, repeal, uh, that, um, had been placed on the ballot. Um, I believe Northwest COG was looking at doing a, um, a support resolution themselves. Uh, in addition, uh, we called, uh, the Colorado Municipal League, uh, to see where they were, and they had been working on a, um, uh, just more information on it, um, and hadn't quite at that time come out with, um, any, uh, support or, or not for it. I did check in with them earlier this week on, uh, Monday, just to see if, uh, you know, what their status was, and, and didn't hear back before the meeting. Uh, but, you know, essentially, what, what Gallagher did, um, back in the, in the 80s, um, was, was set the, uh, the ratio of, of, um, property tax that can be leveled, levied, um, at 45% residential and 55% is to be paid by non-residential. So things like commercial and agricultural land, and vacant land, and industrial land, things like that. Um, and so, uh, the, the idea there is that as, um, residential valuation in the state continues to outpace that of, um, of the, uh, commercial land and other lands, um, it has the effect that commercial land pays a larger freight, um, or a larger share of the overall property tax. Um, and what's happening now is, um, that, uh, when, back in the 1970s, um, they froze that, um, as the residential property values were growing. Um, we expect now that about 80% of the total assessed valuation in the state, um, is residential property tax, um, which is just a, an astonishing number. So, um, uh, it's expected that next year, there's gonna be, you know, a, a ratchet down again, uh, of that, uh, that rate. Um, so right now, um, it's at about 7.15%, uh, as the assessment rate, and it's probably gonna go down to 5.88. Uh, and so the idea, um, with this repeal, is that it would allow it to just freeze it again, um, at these two assessment rates. So 7.15 for residential, and then the 29, um, uh, percent for, um, uh, for, uh, uh, non-residential properties. Um, and so, uh, essentially, what we're, uh, looking for here is, uh, just, uh, the council to see if, uh, you wanted to continue with this support of the Gallagher repeal. Um, I think what the effect would have is that, you know, we could then lend our support to Northwest COG or, uh, CML, um, as, as they, uh, proceed on with, with any of their, um, uh, amendment, or any of their, uh, support for this. And then, there is one caveat, uh, one addition in here, um, that's for council discussion, is that, um, Eagle County, um, is adding a separate question, um, and has asked for, uh, general support, um, from, from the council. And so, I think that theirs is a, um, put on there as a safety net. Um, if it passes at the state level, then- Um, if it passes at the state level, then, you know, their question is essentially moot. Um, but, uh, you know, I think that, uh, there was some concern that it might not pass at the state level. Um, I think there will be a concerted and funded effort, um, by opposers to, uh, keep it, as it is today. Um, so, uh, with that, um, Jeff, uh, you've got your hand up already.
Yeah, I do. I have just one quick, uh, two quick notes, I guess. Uh, first is that CML does support Amendment B. They do support the repeal of Gallagher. And, uh, they sent out some, a note today that said they support it because it will resolve conflicts in the Colorado Constitution, provide additional flexibility to lawmakers, and help to stabilize local property revenues over time. And then just one other note on the Eagle County, uh, measure, as Ryan said, that's basically to allow them to adjust their mill levy, uh, to maintain prior year revenues. In the event that there's an adjustment to the assessment rate, it would cause a reduction in the, um, uh, revenues from that property tax. So...
Uh-oh, Jeff, you're mute. Did we lose him? The ca-
Yo, Ryan.
Ryan, yep.
Welcome to Zoom. Enter your meeting ID followed by pound. Enter your participant ID followed by pound. Otherwise, ju- Please enter the meeting password followed by pound. You are in the meeting now. There are seventeen participants in the meeting.
You know, we do really long meetings in Pickin and on Zoom, and we just don't have that same thing. So...
We've been dealing with pro-velocity at our, our phone carrier, uh, since this started, that these problems started.
Oh, so it's an internet cra-, it's an internet crash thing?
We don't know.
Well, Bill Kane did, uh, freeze before, so luckily he unfroze.
So we're back up.
And they did was extend the time. They found that there was a, a time issue and then they extended that, but that didn't seem to...
Right. Didn't seem to resolve that, yeah. So they're still looking at it. Um, and we do call them with the time. So that, that, that we lose the calls, so they, they can't catch them.
Okay, are we back up?
We're back up.
Okay, so, um, if, unless there are further questions, I would entertain a motion to approve, uh, the resol- Pardon? Yeah, I'm sorry. Just go ahead.
Um, okay, so this is all new to me as a new counselor, you know, having a resolution to state an opinion of the council. Um, and it feels weird to me. Do, is there precedent for this? Like, what other resolutions have, has the Town of Desault done similar to this?
Um, let's see. At the last election, uh, there were, if, like, last November, there were a few measures on there that the council supported. And I, I don't remember off the top of my head exactly what they were. Um, uh, so I, I, I wouldn't be able to enlighten you there, but, um, it, there, there is precedent for it. Some councils choose not to. Uh, some councils, uh, like to do it if it's, uh, an issue that they feel strongly about. Um, so it's just, you know, at, at the council's discretion, uh, really. And, uh, Jeff, I don't know if you have any other, uh, anything to add?
In, in my time with the town, yeah, as Ryan mentioned, there's been, I, I believe, just a couple of resolutions expressing support, uh, for different ballot measures. But there is authority under the Fair Campaign Practices Act for municipalities to adopt resolutions, taking a position on a particular issue such as this. But it's within the Town Council's discretion what they would like to do.
Yeah, there was, there was...
Sorry, I was just going to say that you've done something similar recently, supporting legislation, you know, but of course not at the state level, you know, it was more at the federal level where you took a stance on, on something that the council felt strongly about. Um, so similar, it wasn't an election, uh, issue necessarily, but, um, certainly a policy stance.
Everything is very similar to like, you know, we're all happy with the Colorado Great Outdoors Act. We endorse that. I would, I would think it's along those lines.
Does that answer your question, Elise?
It does.
Okay, thanks. Um, all right, with that, I would entertain a motion to approve Resolution Number Thirty-Four, Series of Twenty-Twenty.
So moved.
Moves their second?
Second.
Okay, moved and seconded. Pam, please call the roll.
Okay, thank you. Um, let's begin with Glenn Drummond?
Yes.
Thank you. Bill Kane?
Yes.
Thank you. Ryan Slack?
Yes.
Thank you. Gary Tannenbaum?
Yes.
Thank you. Elise Hoddle?
Yes.
Thank you. David Knight?
Yes.
Thank you. And Bill Infante?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries unanimously.
All right, thank you. Uh, we move on to Resolution Number Thirty-Five. Resolution is Town Council of Desault, Colorado approving intergovernmental agreement between the city and town councils of the City of Aspen, Town of Snowmass Village, Town of Desault, and Town of Carbondale regarding the provision of mutual coverage for inspection services between the municipalities. So, Ryan?
Yeah, so I'll jump in on this one. Um, essentially, uh, what this is, uh, is a cooperative agreement among the, um, the, uh, building departments. Many of the building departments are, um, you know, one-man shows, uh, that, that ours included. Uh, and so when a vacation comes up or, or a need to be off, um, this allows, uh, them to lean on their partners at the other, uh, municipalities or governments, um, just to, to help out with inspections and things like that. Uh, we, uh, with our previous, um, building official, um, he used to do the same type of exchange, uh, with the building official on Carbondale. And so, uh, certainly something that's, um, familiar with us already and, um, um, uh, practiced, um, uh, somewhat regularly. So kind of a housekeeping thing. And, um, uh, the other governments, by the way, have, uh, already endorsed this. Um, so, um, we're just kind of running up, uh, on the tail end.
Great. Now, questions from council? I know this is, uh, paid off in previous years where, you know, we have one building inspector and he covers a lot of ground. So this is, uh, this is a good deal, I think, for everybody. Um, so, uh, is there a motion to approve Resolution Number Thirty-Five, Series of Twenty-Twenty?
Mayor, I move the Town Council approve Resolution Number Thirty-Five, Series of Twenty-Twenty.
Second.
Okay, moved and seconded. Pam, please call the roll.
Thank you. Who was the second on that? I'm sorry. Thank you, David.
Glenn. Oh, I didn't, Glenn.
Not always quick enough to see that yellow light shine up. Uh, let's begin with Elise Hoddle.
Yes.
Thank you. Uh, Gary Tannenbaum?
Yes.
Thank you. Bill Infante?
Yes.
Thank you. Bill Kane?
Uh, yes.
Thank you. Ryan Slack?
Yes.
Thank you. Glenn Drummond?
Yes.
And David Knight?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries unanimously.
Okay, thank you. Our next order of business, uh, hot off the press is our survey results. I think this is the firm of Arthur Andersen has this, has the envelope. This is, uh, we, I don't think anybody knows the answer to this one yet. So, um, with that, um, uh, let you explain where we are, please, how many surveys went out, what our response rate was, and what the direction looks like, so...
Sure. So, um, I'm going to clear my screen and then I think Christie and I will, um, tag-team this one a little bit. Um...
And I know Arthur Andersen's out of business, by the way.
Right. So, um, okay, so let me see if I can... All right, can everybody see that?
Mm-hmm.
Great. Um, so as you recall at the last meeting, um, we had said that, um, uh, we'd like to send out a, a quick survey just to kind of take the pulse of, um, the business community. Uh, and so we did just that. We sent out, uh, to a little over a hundred, uh, folks, a hundred and five, I think the number was. Um, and, and we got thirty-three respondents. Um, we basically gave them until last evening, Monday evening, um, to reply. We did send out some reminders and, um, got, uh, a few more respondents over the weekend, which was great. Um, and so we had, uh, you know, a couple of questions to ask, um, as we did send it out to a number of, uh, our, our local businesses. And, um, as you can see, retail was the lion's share followed by restaurants. Uh, and then we had lodging, um, gyms, and, uh, some other businesses. Um, then we asked just a question about the impact, um, and trying to figure out on a scale of one to five, you know, were you really impacted, uh, or, um, you know, not so much. And of course, zero answered, um, not so much.
Hey, Ryan, can I ask a question? Were you trying to advance the slides? Or not? Okay, you're not. Um, so you have to do the enable editing? No, do the enable, hit the enable editing up at the top, because I think you have like a...
Can you guys do this?
Yeah, now we can. Okay.
Yep, that's why, sorry. Okay.
Great.
Do you think I'm losing it? Appreciate it. Um, okay, and then... Oh.
Because we didn't get...
Oh, you didn't see that one either. Okay. One sec, let me start this over. Okay, let's try again. Okay, can you see that now?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, great. Um, so sorry about that. Thanks for jumping in there, Susan. Um, so you can see who the respondents were. It was largely, um, from our retail and, and restaurant sector, but we did, uh, send it out to other businesses as well and got some feedback there. Um, and then asked this question about the impact, um, of, uh, coronavirus. And you can see about half, uh, of the respondents said that they were heavily impacted. Um, and another quarter indicated, um, that, uh, they were, uh, you know, a, a four. So obviously on that heavier, uh, spectrum. And then the last slide was kind of asking, you know, what, what can we do to help? You know, we've got this money, um, from the CARES Act. Um, and it was pretty interesting, you know, it was, it was, um, uh, a lot of different responses. Um, definitely had the, the rent and mortgage relief as, uh, the largest ask there. Um, uh, followed by the, the PPE, uh, as well as employee retention, uh, coming in, um, as, you know, second, uh, most important. Um, and then looking at the Salt Bucks, individual marketing for businesses. And then finally, um, townwide marketing efforts and outdoor dining grants as being the last. Um, and so it was, you know, just interesting feedback for us to, to understand that. And, you know, I think, uh, where where we are with it, uh, is to make a recommendation ultimately, just as it relates to, uh, the business funding. So as you recall, we had fifty thousand dollars remaining, um, would be to, uh, do a quick, uh, grant cycle and, you know, allow the businesses to choose what it is that they need. And, uh, you know, we would recommend that we, uh, do those, um, for expediency, um, just at the, at the staff level. Um, we would create, uh, a, um, an application for folks. We want to make sure that obviously they're in compliance with, uh, the, the, uh, CARES Act rules. And, um, you know, we could review those and, and be able to get the money out to them, uh, relatively quickly. Uh, right now, we were thinking that we would offer grants up to, uh, twenty-five hundred dollars. And so it would be on a, on a first come, first served basis. Um, and so, uh, we'll leave you, uh, with, with that one to ponder and discuss, uh, as, as council. But, you know, we felt that, just given the responses, uh, you know, one, one area doesn't, um, necessarily stick out. So let's let these businesses, uh, help themselves with, you know, what they know they need.
Great. Uh, questions from council on, uh, survey results?
Glenn?
So with like rental, it, it seems like, you know, rent, similar to, you know, just regular families. Do we come up with a criteria similar to what Boston? I mean, what do we, how do we?
There would, yeah, there would need to be some criteria there. We started to, uh, to discuss, um, that at, um, at the staff level, um, you know, just as we were getting these, uh, um, uh, the information back. And, you know, we, we, um, thought through a few of those things like, you know, have you, um, tapped into other resources? Did you try to get the, the PPP loans? Um, and, you know, things like that that kind of just showed that pattern of, of, you know, being proactive, um, to our business. And I know a number of businesses certainly have done that. Um, and, uh, so we, we just kind of want to see that, um, uh, that level of commitment there, uh, to be, uh, to be fair to all of the applicants. Christie, can you think of anything else that was on that, that we discussed?
Yeah. What we're looking at doing, um, is we're aligning that, uh, grant application with the, the way that the, the grant itself, the CARES Act is structured, to assure that, um, all of the asks are going to be in compliance with the grant itself. Um, first and foremost, just to make sure that all of our expenses can be reimbursed through the federal government. And, uh, making sure also that, that only businesses within the Town of Desault, um, that have taken our business's sales tax license with the town.
Questions, comments? Um, well, you know, I think the, uh, the direction seems pretty clear from the, the survey results. I think there may be some, uh, requests for help that may be hidden in that data. I know that I, I've talked to two restaurateurs that are contemplating trying to enclose outdoor space, you know, at some, you know, significant capital cost. And, uh, so I would not be surprised if we don't hear more, uh, on that front. So I'd, I'd be prepared for that. And I think, you know, we should be prepared to help where we can reasonably. Um, so, uh, with that, I, you know, it looks like, uh, you know, Glenn's comment about formulating some criteria and, uh, process, uh, looks like a good direction. So no, no council wants to add more, whether you want to voice vote or anything kind of endorsing direction or...
I think ultimately, we will ask for that on the, on the package unless council wants to break it up into its component parts. Um, one thing, just as a, an addition, is, um, you know, while we had one respondent say, you know, that they were interested in, in, uh, assistance with outdoor dining, um, you know, staff, uh, is getting ready for, uh, an eventuality that, that more than one restaurant may come in asking for, uh, for that, um, uh, use on their property. Uh, and so, you know, we are, we've met with, uh, the fire department, building official, uh, you know, planning, uh, myself, and, um, have also done that more broadly with the area, uh, managers. And then have another, uh, internal meeting, uh, just to kind of create, uh, you know, a, a process for folks. Um, you know, this does come with, uh, some detail that... The other thing is, you know, does the tent have, or accommodate groups, or are they sort of like individual eating pods? That might make it a little easier for them. I was with the town manager up in Snowmass this weekend and, and he indicated that, you know, their solution is to enclose some of the eating areas with plexiglass, but with no roof. And that gets around the ventilation issue with, as it relates to both carbon monoxide and also just the, you know, the, the characteristics of COVID spreading through, through aerosol or droplets. And so, you know, there's, there's a lot to think about on this. You know, that doesn't work when it's snowing, but it might work when it's, you know, nice, a little bit nicer outside. So there's, there's certainly a lot of options that are open to people. And, you know, I think the other thing is, like, you know, I'll just draw to a personal experience, trying to get your, get, get a hold of a, a new bike in, in this era is next to impossible. I wouldn't be surprised if, you know, getting access to tents is going to be difficult. I do know that even getting in touch, getting a hold of plexiglass right now is tough. So, you know, I think, you know, people are going to need to get creative. But one of the things that does seem to be a, a trend is that, you know, the eating and the outdoor dining on public property seems to be going away. I think just with, you know, the snow and the need for snow storage, plowing, et cetera, that it's kind of, you know, reeling back to the private side of things. So, so that's just a quick sidebar of what we know so far on that. But, you know, it's our intention to, to be ready and be helpful for when that does come up. And if I may, just briefly, there were four other thoughts for contributions, and this was sort of more on the community side of things, which of course, we heard about the rental assistance for $15,000. Food Bank of the Rockies, Elise, you had asked a question about food being delivered to the Orient Fort Apartments. I did follow up on that. And that was not at the direction of Food Bank of the Rockies. They think that maybe, you know, somebody grabbed some and was, was trying to be nice or, or maybe like an, there were some extras, an employee just dropped them off or something afterward. But, you know, when they heard that, it kind of went, went to spoils. You know, they'll put that message out to their, to their staff, not to do that in the future. And then, of course, we had the Mid Valley Clinic, where they're providing some free testing and, as well as medical services and have been. They're doing a lot of volunteering on the, the Mirabus for, for testing and have a nonprofit set up to be able to provide those services. And then lastly, the Salt Chamber, who have been doing quite a bit of support, not only for the businesses and helping them get information on PPP, but then also business resources. We have new businesses that are coming in and talking to them as they're moving to town, you know, not only residential interest, but then, you know, as they move here, they want to set up businesses or, or have a place to work. So that's working. And then, you know, just being general support on messaging and some things and stuff like that, which, which has been really valuable for us. So that's kind of all, all of it in a nutshell. Sorry, it took so long.
Thank you. Additional discussion? Thanks, Elise. Elise, go ahead.
One quick thought, as we are talking through the survey results and how, you know, different businesses needed different things. One thing that occurred to me, and granted, I realize that, you know, going out to the public with a survey is a lot more work than compiling the answers of 33 business surveys. But I just think it would be really interesting to talk to the public and, you know, ask them, you know, what, how, you know, how do you see things changing for you in the winter? You know, what would make you comfortable to go inside? Or, you know, what would make you comfortable to frequent a business or, you know, a gym or whatever? And providing that feedback, you know, to the businesses to help them make those decisions. I don't know if that's a realistic thing, but it would be a nice way to reach out to the community and incorporate, you know, that feedback to successful, healthy and safe, you know, business economy through the, the winter.
I'd like to say, like, as a member of the public, not getting infected with the deadly virus.
Thanks, Glenn.
Helpful. Yeah, thanks. I think the state and perhaps even the Association of Ski Towns may have been doing some survey work on that, what people's propensity will be to dine indoors and how secure they feel about the social distancing and spacing plans. And I, I know the state has, or I think there was a story in the Denver Post about concern, people's reluctance to, to eat indoors in the winters, significant. So going to be some consumer resistance undoubtedly.
Yeah, we had that data that was sent out to us not, not too long ago. I could share that with, with council, just so you can kind of see where, where people are. But, you know, there, there certainly is still some, some reluctance for, for dining indoors. And so I think what we're hearing on some feedback is for these restaurateurs to be looking at, you know, building up their takeout model and really trying to push that, of course. That has its limitations, but trying to get entrepreneurial in, in what they are offering is maybe a bit different from what they've done traditionally. And so if we can offer that and push that information out there as well, we're certainly happy to do that. And one thing, one thing to keep in mind, we are in, you know, end of September, so near October, all of the money does have to be spent by the end of December. So we do have a little bit of a, a timeline that we want to just make sure that we don't have to turn any money back at the end of the day.
Thank you. Well, if there's no further discussion, we will turn to our next agenda topic, which is an update on CDC and the River Park project.
Actually, Mayor?
Yeah.
This last item was, was meant to be an action item, just so that staff could have some, some direction on, on how to proceed. So it would be helpful for us if there was a general consensus of council, or if you'd like some more information or, or what have you.
Yeah. Now, I asked that question earlier, I thought the answer was that you would wait till you saw a recommended package or something. But sure, I mean, I, what would you like? Would you like just to go around the horn and get, I think, the individual comments? Do you want a council motion to endorse the direction that you're taking? What would you like?
Looks like Christie had the question, maybe.
Yeah. Thank you. I, I think that all we would want is that what was in our council packet shows the full budget. We just are looking for an approval of moving forward with that full package as had been presented in, in the council packet.
Okay.
If you'd like for me to show you, I, I definitely could just share my screen just for a minute, if you'd like.
Mr. Mayor, with that type of action, I would just recommend a, a council motion to approve that funding plan that's set forth in the packet.
Okay. Is there a motion?
I'm happy to make a motion.
Is there a motion?
Mayor, I make a motion to approve the estimated coronavirus relief funding as shown in the council packet.
Your second?
Second.
Okay, moved and seconded. Voice vote on this one or roll call?
Voice vote is fine.
Okay. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
Great, thank you, guys. You okay, Ryan?
Yeah, yeah, I think that's good. I appreciate that. Thank you.
Okay. So our last interaction tonight is to receive an update on CDC and the River Park project.
Yeah, so just wanted to bring a couple of things to your attention. You know, we obviously have Jeff and Susan here, who have been working away at finalizing the purchase agreement. We did get some good news this last week, that the letter of map revision, or LOMER, as it's known, was approved. And there's a, a waiting period once approved for a, an appeal. But, you know, that, those appeals, you know, we're not, we're not expecting that, that one would, would come forth. But nonetheless, we've got to, to do that last step. But on the purchase front, you know, all the documentation is lining up there. I don't know if Susan or Jeff want to take that as far as some, your crystal ball on, on timing a little bit.
Sure, I'll just add that we've been working through some issues with the developer, who in turn has been working through issues with the underlying, or the current property owner, on getting everything lined up so we could move towards the closing. The planning staff and I have been working on finalizing the plat, addressing a couple of easement issues affecting the property, preparing approval documents from the, that were approved or authorized as part of the...
Oh, no.
Enter your meeting ID, followed by pound. Enter your participant ID, followed by pound. Otherwise, just press pound. Please enter the meeting password, followed by... You are in the meeting now. There are 16 participants in the meeting.
Okay, so we're back.
All right, we're back.
I, I think where I might have dropped off is just to say we're, we're working with the developer and the underlying property owner on some of these final issues. One of the last ones relates to some existing sewer taps and transfer of them and some issues that have come up with the Salt Sanitation District and hopefully getting close on resolving those. So Susan, do you have a crystal ball as far as a potential timeline?
No, I think that'll be sometime before October 13th. We had the amount put in the accounts payable this time. And so I think, I think everything's kind of lining up. Did you want to mention anything about the, the option on parcel, or anything or not?
Sure. Yeah, so the, under the approval ordinance for the Basal River Park, it authorized the town to purchase the, the park parcel. And then it also authorized the town to purchase the art parcel in the event that the art base was not in the position to move forward on a purchase at that time. And so that is what's happening. The town is stepping into the shoes of the art base to move forward on the purchase of that property. It's still to be determined how that development of that property might move forward. And we are in, keeping in touch with the art base as to their plans on whether they're interested in moving forward with development on that site or how that might play out. So as soon as there's more information available on, on that issue, we'll certainly share it with council. And I, and I would agree with Susan. I think in the next couple of weeks, we should, we should be at the closing table.
So the final plat survey work is all completed. These are basically plat notes and plat language that we're trying to sort out?
It's just standard, standard kind of comments that you get. I think you actually saw them when I was over at Town Hall. I had it in my hand when I was looking up a reception number, you know, it's, it's that kind of thing.
Okay. Thank you. Any questions from council on where we are with CDC? You know, we complete the final plat. It doesn't have to come before council, I guess, it just be recorded when all the parties have signed off. And that sets the table for us to actually close on the purchase and start making improvements on the, the park, so.
And take the fence down.
Yeah. So, okay, if, any questions? If, if not, that completed, do you have anything else, Ryan, on CDC?
No, Mayor.
Then that concludes our agenda. That's all we have for you tonight. And I will employ my divine right of kings and call the meeting adjourned. Thanks, everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a nice night. You have a good night.
Bye.